Yeah, you're gonna be heard.
All right. Recording in progress.
Calling the December 12th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Committee to hold to order at 6:34. All councilors are present except for Council Board Leader, who said she would potentially be late if she could make it. And calendar and communications, we'll start with Councilor Merritt, do you have any communications?
Uh, I have.
Can you pull your microphone?
I have just two, so to speak, notes to me directly was about Marsh Road and the flooding, and I've already talked to Director Hanover, and that is on the table.
Okay.
And Long Hill Road, the new construction of, I believe it's a gas station, I'm not sure, but there was a complaint that of a citizen that tried to put gas tanks in his property, and he was refused by zoning, and he understands they're getting gas tanks, and he'd like to know about that.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Pacino?
I had one citizen ask me about the dump and the, I believe it's a give and take area. I talked to the town manager, who talked to Mr. Hanover, and I got him an answer, and that was it.
Okay.
Everything's good.
Thank you. Councilor Rusk?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that Groton Parks and Rec, in conjunction with Ledge Light Health District and United Way of Southeastern Connecticut, opened their snack pantry at the community center. It's open Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 4:30 for youth in their after-school program. Groton Human Services is looking for volunteers for their food distribution this Friday. There's a phone number online, or you could call Human Services to help out with that. And Monday, there's a mobile food pantry at St. John's for United Way, with United Way of Southeastern Connecticut. It is Monday, December 18th, from 12:30 to 2:00, all are welcome.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three things, I just have been watching Public Works putting in the lights at Paquonic Plains, and looking forward to the new lighting. This was from a referral by Council Board Leader, and passed by the council. We've been looking excited about this, so it will extend, especially at this time of year, it'll extend walking times at Paquonic Plains, so they're looking great, and been watching them go in. I attended, last week, attended the Trails meeting, which is a quarterly meeting. Two things out of that meeting, one is Groton Open Space has closed on their Center Groton Reserve on 117, so congratulations to them on the new open space that we have in town. And they also talked about the Wolf Brook property, and starting to work on that, talking about parking, trails, and bridges. And then this morning, with Council Pacino, we had a really nice walk with Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowicz through downtown Mystic, visited Mystic Suites, there's chocolates right there, everybody enjoyed, Bank Square Books, and North Swell. We also were joined by First Selectwoman Daniel Cheeseborough, and had an excellent walk and great conversations with the merchants, it was just, it was great, it was a nice holiday thing to do, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Relatively quiet week for me. I did want to point out one thing, I did attend a SCAROWA summit last week, where things were discussed with various municipal leaders throughout the region regarding the increase in continued costs of waste disposal in Southeast Connecticut, as well as around the entire state, and how we're looking at ways to recommend and move forward with different measures such as direct funding for infrastructure, utilizing some of the bottled funds, increasing the waste energy capacity, building additional facilities, passing additional recycling content laws, and consider unit-based pricing. So it was an interesting summit, got some good information from that. That was about all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received communications in the form of a letter at my door from a developer who was interested in redevelopment of the ESP Butler property. I wanted my councilors and the community to know, out of full transparency, I have no opinion on the developer, but I did provide Manager Burt with a copy of the letter that I received, and note that they would have to go through the RFP process, which the council would decide, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended, along with the mayor, I know she'll probably report out too, a walking tour with Senator Murphy at the Mystic Seaport, and want to thank Mr. Armstrong and his other employees about thanking them for a wonderful tour, and exciting things are happening at Mystic Seaport. And the second item I have is I was appointed about a month and a half ago to the moldworking group by Senator Summers, and I've been attending those meetings, and this is evaluating the connection between the polybutylene pipes and indoor residential and commercial buildings, so we've been working on that at least once a week when we can have meetings. That's all we have to report.
Very good, thank you. I have a few things that I'd like to notate. Groton Parks and Rec Program registration is now open. I would like to send congratulations to Jeffrey Room on his position as the new Fire Chief of Paquonic Bridge Fire Department, and also sending best wishes to the Paquonic Bridge Chief, Tim Driscoll, on his retirement. And it's been a very busy week for me, with many communications with residents. As it's been stated here, the Lieutenant Governor has been in town today, and I'm happy that Councilor Jones and Pacino were able to represent Groton, as well as when Senator Chris Murphy was in town, Councilor Parker and I were able to represent Groton. Also to notate, the council has been invited to an annual Navy Winter Holiday Social this Thursday, and invites were sent by email, if you hadn't noticed, or maybe you have overlooked it. The Groton RTM swearing-in ceremony is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at Thrive 55. And I also put together some, the ad hoc committee assignments, so I will notate first. This TVCCA, where Councilor Parker will be once again representing us. The Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee, I have put down as Councilor Jones as the Chair, along with Gajewski and Rusk to serve. The Town Council Public Safety Committee will be chaired by Council Rusk, as well as Pacino and Merritt. Eastern Regional Ketchment Area Council, David Hume would continue in that role. Economic Development Commission Liaison would be Council McBride. Gulf Advisory Board, oh, I'm sorry, that hasn't been chosen yet. Pequot Woods Board of Trustees would be Councilor Jones. School Readiness Council will be continuing with Kevin Trejo. Southeastern Area Transit would be Robert Boris. The Beautification Committee would be continuation of Cindy Fortner as the Chair, Leanne Obrey, Nancy Codien, Bruce McDermott, and Aileen Schulman. The Cable Television Advisory Council would be Councilor Pacino. And that's what I have for today. There are also, some councilors may have put in for other committees, and those will have to go through a process where the whole council votes on those. And there's a few more that I still need to appoint, too, so, but for tonight, that is it, and we will move on to approval of minutes.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
When you appointed the temporary roles, you didn't say who was the Chair.
You shall be the Chair, thank you.
Oh, okay. I just, I did want to step on that.
I think you're right, and it was probably one of my first acts, and it was, you know, a little nervous at the time, so I apologize for that, and I did have you written down as the Chair of that committee on my notes, so thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there any motion for the approval of the minutes?
Do you still move?
All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That'll pass eight to zero to zero. Onto the first order of business, which is the Groton Long Point Road over Amtrak Railroad And we have Mr. Hanover here tonight, would you like to give us an update?
Great, Director Public Works. A few months ago, Town Manager Burt and I attended a meeting with engineers and representatives from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, DOT, regarding the Groton Long Point Road Bridge over Amtrak. Just to be clear for anybody, this is not the other project we have going on in Groton Long Point, which is the Groton Long Point Road Bridge over Palmer's Cove, which is owned by the fishermen. This bridge is on the same road, but it's a little further. DOT has inspected this bridge, they've noted some deficiencies of it, and they are in the planning process to do some rehabilitation of this bridge. They wanted to come tonight to present four options for the council's consideration and input, because the way the program works for this, it's called an orphan bridge, which DOT is responsible for the structure, the town is responsible for the road service, but under state statutes, the local municipalities are responsible for 15% of the cost of the project. So they have some options to look at, we're in the beginning part of the design, so they want to get some input from you, so without any further ado, I'll turn it over to DOT to go through a short presentation.
I could give a quick introduction here, Francisco, before we kind of pass it along to GM2. So my name is Isu Blashi, and I work under Francisco Fadul and Derek Lissard in the CLE program. CLE stands for Consultant Liaison Engineering, and GM2 is our consultant liaison engineers for this particular project mentioned. We do have a presentation prepared for this meeting. Dennis, do you have the ability to share this presentation on the screen at this time?
Doesn't look like I do, so, actually, let's see, hold on a second. Try, sorry, bear with me. All right, is everybody able to see my screen?
No, unfortunately, no.
No?
I do listen.
Wait, hold on a minute.
Yeah, it's now.
We can see it now.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm not sure if this will work in the full mode, but I think I'll just go through it this way, I think I was having difficulties with the full mode, but, but anyway, I guess I'll introduce myself first. My name is Dennis Garso, I work with GM2 Associates, we're acting as the consultant liaison engineer on behalf of the Connecticut DOT. And the project that we're talking about is State Project 0580342, which is Bridge 3665, which is Groton Long Point over Amtrak Railroad. And I kind of go through this presentation. As far as the project team, just for those who are not aware of it, Derek Lissard is the contact, or as the contact, Connecticut DOT Principal Engineer, Francisco Fadul, which is also in attendance at the meeting, is the Connecticut DOT Project Manager for this project. Isif Blashi is also in attendance, is the project engineer. Richard Armstrong is the GM2 Program Manager, and myself, Dennis Garso, GM2 Project Manager. Designer Record is WSP, I believe Jody is on this call as well, from WSP, Jody Coniston. Just to get a little reference here, as to exactly what bridge we're talking about, as you can see here, it's the bridge essentially passing over Amtrak Railroad, very close to the Esker Point Beach, and is north of the other bridge that you were mentioning briefly earlier, which is the Groton Long Point over, over the Palmer Cove, which is under the federal local bridge program. Again, just some more bearings here on the location of the bridge, with Route 215, just a few hundred feet north of the bridge crossing, and to the south is Groton Long Point. One of, a couple of key things to mention, one of the key things to mention on this particular bridge, it is classified as a orphan bridge, in which is a municipal bridge that is over a railroad, that is not owned by the state. So essentially, based on the orphan bridge policy, current policy, Conad is responsible for the inspection and maintenance of the structural elements of the bridge, essentially from the concrete deck, the beams, and the substructure, the abutments and the piers. The municipality is responsible for everything above that concrete deck, which is like the pavement, for example, roadway, any barriers, guardrail, and so forth. According to that, basically, policy, the funding source for the project is 80% federal, 5% state, and 15% municipality. Just to give a little purpose and need, essentially, the project is to address the structural deteriorations of Bridge 3665. Superstructure is rated a five, the paint system is three, which is critical, and the substructure is rated a six. Overall, fair condition. Some of the site constraints that we're dealing with, bear with me. Which, the bridge is one of the two means of access for Groton Long Point. As you're aware, it's on an evacuation route, and the bridge is located over Amtrak, which makes that more complicated with coordinating with Amtrak. Minimum vertical clearance over Amtrak is a control in overhead utilities, and also there's a water main on the bridge as well, so all those things that we have to take into consideration for the project. We, it'd be formed a, what they call a rehabilitation study report, back several months ago, and we presented that findings at the first Town Roads meeting, as John had mentioned, back in August, and we had looked at, basically, essentially, four alternatives, and based on the outcome of that, RSR, and after being vetted through the department, the preferred alternative is a full replacement of the structure. Some of the things we considered is the advancing deterioration of the existing superstructure, the remaining service life of the, of the superstructure, of the existing bridges will, also, the new bridge provides 75 years of service life after replacement, and it's a single-span structure, which eliminates the piers that are within the Amtrak right-of-way, providing a clear span of about 113 feet over the Amtrak right-of-way. And the minimum vertical clearance over Amtrak requirement is, are able to meet that by raising both the bridge and the road about four feet at the location of the bridge, and also provides the lowest cycle cost analysis. This is basically a concept plan, kind of shows rough limits of, of the bridge and also the adjacent roadway approach work that needs to be done. The structure itself is shown in orange, and also the sidewalk, new sidewalk limits are also shown in orange as well, and the dark gray areas, the roadway reconstruction Sort of a elevation view, if you were standing on the tracks, looking towards the bridge, is the top graphic, showing what that would look like. And basically, typical section is a slice right through the superstructure, which is the beams and the deck, sidewalk, and parapets. One of the things to note is, we did some further evaluations of this structure, and also looking at, there's also a new complete streets policy that came out in late August, which followed after the first meeting we had, but at any rate, we had subsequent meetings with the department, and also a design exception meeting relating to the new complete streets criteria, and based on that determination following that meeting, it was noted that because of the posted speed limit of being under 40 miles per hour, we're actually, to meet complete streets requirements for bike lanes, we only need a five-foot shoulder to accommodate a painted bike lane, so we're able to minimize that width. The existing structure has two 12-foot lanes and two eight-foot shoulders currently, so we're able to reduce that width and cut down on some of the costs associated with replacement. And we'd be still maintaining and reconstructing the sidewalk along the west side of the bridge. And this is basically shown here, real view. They say what's shown in orange is where the new sidewalk would be installed, associated with the project, and the red is where there's existing sidewalk now, on the bridge, we'd be replacing that existing sidewalk. And then further north, up along the west side of Route 215, we're looking at also filling in, there's a gap in the sidewalk, just south of Mohegan Road, so that would be a part of this project as well. And then as mentioned, as far as the preferred alternative for complete streets, so, one of the other thing the Connecticut DOT is considering to incorporate this new policy is, in this corridor, there's a large demand for not just pedestrian traffic, but for bicycle traffic as well, so, and it will affect the project to the south, the structure, Bridge number 46775 over the Cove, so that's going to be taken into consideration as well as far as complete streets with the federal funding attached to that project. It's mandated to look at complete streets as well, but at any rate, the determination and the consideration right now is to basically provide new sidewalks all the way as far south as East Shore Road, the next intersection just south of Palmer Cove, and basically continue that sidewalk along the west-owly edge, all the way through the Bridge 3665 project they're presenting tonight. the way through the Bridge 3665 project that we're presenting tonight, and connecting in with the existing sidewalk at 215, and then also filling in that gap. And then the other thing is to provide painted bike lanes from East Shore Road all the way north to approximately the intersection of 215 with US-1. It's another thing that was a little different, wasn't discussed at the time of the First Town Roads Meeting. As far as construction costs, we're looking at an overall cost, which is a 2026 construction numbers of 13.8 million, which is a little over 11 million for 80% funding, for federal funding, 5% state is about 700. The town share at 15%, based on the orphaned bridge policy, would be 2.1 million approximately. As far as the schedule, we're looking at having, hosting a public, virtual public information meeting in the spring of next year. Primary design would be completed and approved in the summer of 2024. Design completion, final design completion is slated for summer of 2026. Notice proceed for construction would be winter of 2026, with destruction more than likely starting in April of '27, and this is estimated to be about a two-year construction project, so two seasons. So that's, partly, that's, you know, these are the tentative dates that we have at this And that pretty much completes my presentation at this point, and we can open it up to any questions or concerns that the committee may have. Thank you.
Counselor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions. My first question is, if this is going to start in 2026, when would the town need to allocate our portion of the funding? Would that be fiscal year '26?
I'm sorry. So you're breaking up. Can you repeat that?
Yeah.
Sorry. With the projects estimated to start in 2026, when would the town need to fill their portion of the, the funding for the bridge? What fiscal year?
Of the funding? Francisco, you think you can answer that?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Francisco Fedul here, supervising engineer for the team. The answer to the question is, we try to time the town funding portion to, prior to the final design plans being packaged up, and that would be, you know, a couple of months prior to the FDP milestone, which is the final design plans. Does that answer the question?
Yes, that does answer my question. Thank you very much. My next question is, as a town, we've seen rising costs due to inflation on other projects. Are these estimates of the construction cost based on 2023 numbers, or will it be adjusted for inflation as well?
Yeah, correct. Normally, Connecticut DOT's got an estimating guidelines that we do follow. Those actually guide us through the timeline to project out to, and the, more or less, the inflationary percentages to increase to, depending on the construction date. These estimates are preliminary still, but they are to the best of our ability in terms of the inflationary forces.
All right. Okay. And then, my next question is regards, this is into Groton Long Point, this is the only road that leads into there. What is the impact that traffic will have on the development of the bridge?
Yeah. Yeah, I can answer that, and that's something I didn't touch base on. During, during construction of this bridge, we are going to maintain one lane of alternating traffic, signal controlled, so we're not planning on closing the, closing the bridge, so we will not have to detour traffic. So the intention is to keep, basically, the traffic flowing through the construction site during construction.
All right. And then, my last question is in regards to, this is being a coastal community, when it comes to materials, I know it said, if you gave estimates on, of the alternatives that we could decide to do, is there a potential greater risk of rust of the bridge being a coastal area and having salt, increased saltier air being a coastal community?
Yes, good question. We did take that into consideration, and we are basically prescribing, or asking that the beams will be metallized, which is a galvanizing process, so there will give more longevity than the painted beams that are there today. So that's taken into consideration.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's it for me.
Yeah. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, guys, for the presentation. Can you, looking through the notes that came with our packet, it talks on number four, point number four, it talks about future costs, and part of the reason that you picked option number four is it has the lowest future costs, and one through three have high future costs. Can you just explain what future cost is?
Yeah, I did actually have, go through that. So one of the things that during the RSR, or the rehabilitation study report, primary engineering study phase, as part of that study, we also perform what they call a lifecycle cost analysis, which looks, looks at all of the, the alternatives that are studied within the, in the report, and, you know, one was being like a preservation bridge, which we're doing more proactive repairs, and then there's, the second one was a, a little bit more robust rehabilitation, where we'd be doing, painting the whole, repainting all the beams, doing bearing replacements, eliminating the joints over the piers, those kind of things, so there's additional cost with that. Just kind of explaining, and then the third is a, a superstructure replacement, where we're just removing the beams, if you will, and the deck, and keeping the existing abutments and piers. And four is the preferred alternative, which is basically the full removal of the bridge and full replacement. So, so what that does, that lifecycle cost analysis looks at 75, the next 75 years after these, these particular work items are done, and then it kind of projects that over the, so we look at the next 75 years. And then, for example, if you're keeping the existing bridge, obviously, there's, even if you repair it now, and do, you know, some proactive repairs now, just prolongs the life maybe another 25 years or so, so you're still, within that 75 years, you, at year 25, you have to, there's going to be another replacement cost. So this, so this kind of takes all that consideration, like all the different maintenance that would occur, obviously, as you're kind of looking through this, alternative four would require the less, least amount of maintenance over the 75 years, three, a little bit more because you're keeping the existing abutments and piers that require further maintenance costs, and then bridge rehabilitation, you're keeping the beams and everything, so there's potential for more maintenance costs associated with that. So these basically take that and they project those numbers, and essentially what it's saying, it's, it's better to, you know, to replace it now, spend the money now, and then you have less overall costs, you know, over the seven, 75 years.
So it's sort of a pay me now or pay me later kind of scenario, and if we don't, if we don't do the full replacement, we're going to be continually doing costs, and those just add up, depending on how much work we did on one, two, or three. Okay.
Correct. It's just maintenance costs.
Okay.
I compare it to, you know, another scenario would be like having, you know, having an older car. It was at the point where, you know, it makes sense to replace it because it's just costing you so much to maintain it, to keep it on the road, so it's kind of a similar sort of scenario.
Okay.
Obviously, smaller scale, but similar.
Okay. In item number 10, we talk about the sidewalk, this project's scope involves raising the profile approximately four feet, so we're looking at raising the whole bridge up
Yes.
Four feet. So are you raising the bed also four feet, where the, where the tracks are, is like the whole thing just coming up? Is that basically what's happening, or?
So that's all taken into consideration. So currently, right now, the vertical clearance over the track, from the bottom of the existing beams to the top of the tracks, is about 18 and a half feet. So based on the new requirements for electrified rail system like this, you need 22 and a half feet. So that, obviously, that whole bridge superstructure needs to be raised up four feet, and also the, obviously, the adjacent approaches, and then after you get away from the bridge, you sort of feather that back down, and you're able to, as shown in this slide here, this is basically showing how much roadway reconstruction you'd have to do to basically raise, you know, the bridge, you know, four feet over the tracks.
So my question is, maybe Mr. Hanover can?
Just to clarify, I don't know if you heard your whole question, but the tracks are not being touched.
Just the, just the?
Just the road itself is being raised four feet.
So?
To provide four more feet of clearance for Amtrak.
How many feet were we raising the Groton Long Point Bridge up?
About four feet as well.
So the two of them will come up together? So we're raising that whole road bed from?
Well, the whole, I mean, the whole road won't be raised between the two bridges.
So will there be a swell in the middle between these two bridges?
They'll just be raising the approaches to this bridge, you know, to blend it in, so to speak, with the existing roadway, and then, so you'll drive on the existing road around the fisherman, and then you'll start to come up again for the next bridge.
So we'll go up and down?
Yeah, it's like a roller coaster.
Is that, is that the best way to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't want to raise, it's quite a distance between the two bridges. It would cost a lot of money to raise the whole thing.
I just, I remember as a kid, when I got my license, I loved finding roads like this because you can go, you can bounce up and down across those. Really, it's a lot of fun to do, ride, drive fast through swales like that. So that's my question, is it, that we have these changing road levels going, is that, I guess I'm going to have to trust you that that's the best way to do this, but it just seems like we're going up and down.
If I may? Did I jump in, if I may?
Yes, yes, please.
This is Francisco Fedul again. Dennis, do you happen to have the profile slide?
I don't have a profile slide, but I do have, I can share with everyone. I have a copy of the report. I'll, I'll actually.
That'd be great. And while you're doing that, Dennis, I wanted to go over the profile design work that goes into this. DOT does recognize the fact that there are, you know, there has to be, you know, certain vertical curvature restrictions that has to be followed, and we do have a manual for that that provides guidelines as to the limits of the curvature and the vertical profiles here. So that's all, this profile here, that Dennis is basically showing here, is basically magnified by 10 vertically.
Correct.
So don't think that it's really this steep. It's going to have smoothed it out vertical curves enough that it follows the general guidelines for design of roadways. I wouldn't really get too focused on the vertical curvature, vertical pitches. This area provides for good enough transitions here for us. The driver's not going to notice it significantly compared to today, and the pedestrians and bicyclists are going to have roadway treatments that are going to be, you know, following standards also.
Yes.
Just for clarification, that bottom line is the original road on this, on this image?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see my cursor, yeah, that, that bottom line, we can, is the existing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just, just a question of curiosity.
Wait, point of order.
Hold, Mr. Counselor Merritt, Mr. Jones still has the floor.
Okay.
I guess what I would like, at some point, is just to have the profile of those two bridges compared to each other. It'd be nice to see just the distance. I'm not, I'm trusting that you're doing it's, it's all to standards and everything, but it'd be nice just to see what the profile of that entire stretch looks like. So, all right, thank you.
Counselor Merritt?
I was just wondering about the four-foot increase in the bridge over Palmer Cove. I was, you said that was going to go up four feet also?
Approximately. I don't think they've finalized the design yet, so I can't really say, but, you know, it's a different bridge, so.
I'm, I'm trusting that's appropriate with the replacement of the old bridge?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Counselor Russ?
I do think it's worth noting as well, Dennis, who's completed the preliminary design here, the alignment is tying in at the intersection on either side of the bridge, so we aren't impacting any additional roadways. The transition does tie back, and I think it's at Marsh Road and then South Elm Street as well. So that would be the limits of the impacts.
Correct. Thanks, Jody. Yeah, so they've got, you're marked, Marsh Road is the southern, southerly limit, and South Elm Street, which is also State Road 215 to the north, so we're able to, what's basically showing is, is the limits of roadway reconstruction in dark gray here.
Dennis, do you mind going back to the profile and, and just zoom in, just to give the audience the actual percentages of the vertical slope?
Hold on, sorry. Yeah, so we're, so right now, the grade is about a 4%, and we're going to, to get up and over the Amtrak, to get that clearance, it's about a half, 5 and 1/2%. It's not a tremendous difference. Again, because of this exaggerated scale, it looks a lot worse, and then, just at the north, the northerly approach, as you're getting closer to the intersection with South Elm Street, tends to just flatten out beyond that point. It's actually be less steeper in that area. And that's, that's like the less than a 1% slope.
And the last point too on this is that, this is still preliminary times here, and the town being a financial partner, not so much just a stakeholder, there'll be opportunities to comment further on, on all, all things project-related, to include roadway geometry.
Counselor Russ?
Thank you. If we could look at the alternative comparison slide, please? I just have some questions, so I'm understanding this correctly.
Which side? I'm sorry?
The alternative comparison, the financial slide?
Okay, hold on a second.
That's the future value cost.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, the one with the graph that says construction cost, future lifecycle cost. I think it was a few before that.
Was it graph?
Looks like this.
Oh, are you talking about this one here?
It is page?
I'm sorry.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, about, page 10, perhaps?
Is that? Is that from the, are you looking at the previous presentation, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, Dennis.
The original presentation.
I think they're looking at the first of our meeting presentation.
Yeah, so yes.
Yeah, I think we had it in.
Yeah, we have this chart here, I guess this is what, this is kind of showing.
Alternative comparisons?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the alternative comparison table.
Yep. This, this basically shows something similar.
So I'm going to ask questions based on this.
These are initial calls.
I'm going to ask questions based on the slide in front of me. So the alternate, alternative one was $5,500,000 for construction costs with future lifecycle at $87.2 million. life cycle at eighty-seven point two million. And it goes all the way down to alternative four, which is thirteen million, eight hundred, with a future life cycle cost of forty-one point five million. So, I understand that the municipal cost share is fifteen percent. Is that fifteen percent of the construction cost? Or does that, is it also fifteen percent for the future life cycle cost? Or is that future life cycle more likely to be paid by the state?
Essentially, this, this number is based on the fifteen percent of the construction cost.
I'm sorry? I didn't.
It's the, the two point one million approximately is based on the construction cost.
I guess my question is, if we chose, say, we chose alternate one, alternative one, at five million, five hundred thousand, our fifteen percent would be off that number.
Yes.
But then you have also listed that future life cycle costs at eighty-seven point two million. Should we also assume?
Correct.
That fifteen percent of that would be paid by the municipality? Or would that be paid, would the majority of that be paid by the state? Is there a way to know that?
Can I jump in? Yeah, so remember, the, the policy itself, the Orphan Bridge statutes and policy currently call for fifteen percent cost sharing by the municipality on all structural work that gets done to the bridge.
Okay.
Be it preservation today, be it replacement today versus future costs of structural maintenance also.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Very welcome.
Anybody else have questions? Council Mayor?
Will we get a layout similar to this one that we have on the bridge over Palmer Cove? I'd like to see that also.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll bring that to the council once we get to that point in the design.
But it's the same body that's doing the first bridge, correct?
It's DOT.
Yeah.
Point of order.
Your point of order?
Can we stick to the topic at hand?
I agree. Can we keep it to the agenda item, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Are, are you finished with your time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I want to just piggyback off of Council Russ's question on the town's responsibility for future costs. So, if we look at that eighty-seven million, is the town responsible over the next seventy-five years for thirteen million dollars worth of maintenance? Is that, I would just want to make sure I understand that future costs, we are responsible for fifteen percent of that cost. Is that correct? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's over the seventy-five year period? Or the twenty-five year, or whenever it's done, right? So, I've just.
Did you repeat the question?
My question is, over what timeframe is that, are we required to do that repair work? To have those costs? Over what timeframe? Is it the seventy-five year?
This, the light, I don't know if I can explain again. Life cycle cost analysis is looking at a seventy-five year duration. So, this is the, this is what the cost would be to cover it for the seventy-five years.
So, for alternative.
Obviously. Yep, go ahead.
So, for alternative one, our costs over the seventy-five years would be thirteen million. On alternative four, our costs would be six million out of the forty-ones. So, these are costs that we would incur over the next seventy-five years, depending on which option that we pick, fifteen percent of this estimated number. So, I guess my question.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Town Manager, Bert, do we currently pay for any maintenance on this bridge now?
Quick update, please. May I?
Yes, yeah, please.
These costs are, these are the overall costs. These are not exactly town share costs, just to clarify that. This doesn't take account fifteen percent town share. For example, the forty-one million on, on option four is forty-one total in seventy-five years. And fifteen percent of that cost is the expected town contribution.
Okay. So, that's, so we're understanding it correctly. So, what I wanted to know is, are we currently spending money on maintenance cost on these bridges, on this bridge?
Not that I'm aware of.
And is it?
Just to jump in. Currently, the town or the municipality participates in maintenance work such as roadway paving, efforts, and so forth. And the Connecticut DOT by statute is mandated to take care of the inspections and the structural planning, repairs, and everything else. But with the understanding that it is cost shared between municipality, fifteen percent, state five percent, and federal share at eighty percent.
So, just.
This slide five kind of hopefully summarizes that.
Correct. No, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to get an accurate picture of sort of future costs that the town's gonna be responsible for. Just when, do we currently do, do we have any cost sharing on bridges that we currently have in the town for repair work and stuff? Is that a cost that we have in our capital improvements budget or something?
We've never participated in any cost sharing that I've, since I've been here.
Okay.
Thirty-five years, so.
Do we repair our bridges?
Well, our own bridges, we do, yes. But as you said, you know, the paving surface we take care of. But the structure, the deck and the substructure, we've never.
We've never done it?
Done that.
Okay. I mean, I understand these are just estimates, and they're just trying to forecast what cost. But I just, the, the real, the real cost of this is, could be potentially a lot more, but we just don't know when it'll be. It's seventy-five years is a long time, but it's just something to take into consideration as we pick the alternatives of what the real, it isn't just two million, it's two million plus six million or thirteen million or something. Okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, Council McBride?
Thank you. My questions will become, be coming later when we get closer to the project, because my questions are gonna be more involved with whether or not, you know, where we are overall as a town in terms of our bond funding. How much can we afford? Because I know in the past two years, we've talked about our bond level, where we're at, and we're at a very high rate, and whether or not we can afford the two million, or whether or not, you know, what does the requirement of the, the lower levels get us from a safety standpoint? So, I'll deal with that later if I'm here. But my only question, my only comment would be, on this slide, the sidewalk is on the western side, but on the presentation of the other bridge, it was on the eastern side. So, I just want to make sure we're, we're coinciding the two projects together from the sidewalk perspective?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question is, I believe you said that you were gonna do virtual public information meetings? Is that correct? Or we will be doing in person? For the residents?
The typical is to do the virtual, yeah. Francisco, I don't know if you want to add something?
Sure, yes. It's an interesting question. Since the pandemic, Connecticut DOT has been able to coordinate through various partners to go virtual for some of these meetings to prevent delays to projects and to prevent basically cancellation of the public information effort. Now, since then, you know, there are opportunities to do in-person meetings. And, and we can do hybrid meetings also, where people could do, you know, similar to this instance, where some people can join in virtually and some other ones in person. It tends to be to municipalities likings, similar to state DOT, to try, to, to try to maximize the effect and to reduce the burden and schedule drain that the public informational meetings in person require in terms of resources and times and the buildup timeline, such as, you know, currently, DOT is basically seeing around twelve weeks turnaround from the initial notifications to the actual meeting. That time could be better served with some other progress work that could be done, and some of the resources could be just used elsewhere. But if the town feels strongly that a public informational meeting be conducted in person, the DOT has no issues with that. We just tend to have this be a conversation between the two partners.
So, we're only having one?
Normally, projects such as these can have the one public informational meeting. That does not preclude several meetings with specific stakeholders. And the municipality itself normally, to basically fulfill requirement, federal requirements that come together with the federal funding, public info meeting tends to be the one instance. But more meetings have been known to happen on projects that are more complex or that generate much more public interest. Just to add to that also, as part of the town roads meeting, which we kind of pictured this being, this approach, talk to the town here, part of that is to, to, to try to like, to get you to give us feedback on the potential stakeholders that might have strong interest, such as bicycle groups or some other groups that you feel strongly should be brought on to have special discussions to decide, to try to help us with, come to a better design here. There's basically, there's flexibility to basically doing public information or public participation, is what I mean.
Okay. So, because my concern would be the residents that live there with notification about the one lane in a timely manner, so that they can plan everything out. And not only from them leaving, but if there's an emergency, how that would play out with Groton Long Point and Groton Town, because I believe it's close enough to the borderline for both police departments. So, that was, I'm looking at from that perspective. But I think more than one meet, if everyone's in agreement, one, more than one meeting is probably better. And Council Jones' point about, well, my question is the projected life, so the projected life of that design will be seventy-five years. So, you build it now or within the two years, and later down the road, it could cost us almost forty-two million later on to repair. Because it's not gonna be repaired yearly, once you build it for the first two years, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, this is projected after seventy-five years with no major incidents potential. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burt?
It was covered. I was gonna say, if it was solely a virtual meeting, we could probably host here where we allow people that don't have that access to come in and ask their questions through our equipment.
Right. Are there any more questions? Council Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Marsh Road, although it is an alternate route, it will get some more traffic. Are we looking at any needed improvement to that road due to the additional traffic for that two-year period?
Because we're maintaining the traffic, we're not anticipating substantial amount of traffic to have to access, or you utilize Marsh Road to bypass the construction. Because we're gonna be maintaining one lane of alternate traffic at all times. So, we're not gonna be detouring any of the traffic.
Okay. So, anybody who wants to use Marsh Road to, to detour themselves, they're on their own. All right. The four-foot raise, how will it affect neighboring houses? Will there be an odd or different runoff of water that might be?
It's. Yeah, all that will be taken into consideration during the, the final design phase. But however, we have looked at that as part of the study. Even with this four-foot raise, we're able to keep basically that new embankment on top of the old embankment. So, we're not anticipating the need to do any additional grading outside the roadway. So, that's, that's a positive thing. And then, obviously, with this profile change, the extension of the sidewalks, curbing and so forth, that the consultant engineer, WSP, will be looking at the drainage, the new drainage patterns and making sure that is appropriately captured and handled to not have additional runoff onto any properties.
All right. And my last question was, I was looking at the typical section in the concept on the last page. And you have two three-foot walls on either side of the bridge. Yep.
Yes.
You got it up there, exactly. When you're walking along the road and any other part of this road, a pedestrian can get out of the way if a car bears off the side. Not there. Is there any way that sidewalk side three-foot wall can be roadside and have the pedestrians on the other side of that three-foot wall? Is that something we can look at as a concept?
Having pedestrians be on the opposite side of the parapet?
Yep, if you move that parapet in.
I mean, it's possible to do that, but, yeah.
Because it's just, at this point, if a, you know, if a pedestrian unfortunately gets hit on any other part of the road, they'll bounce off. But here, there's no bouncing. This question.
Yes, I mean, it's, pedestrians are being provided a raised sidewalks. I guess I'm not, not understanding the question.
What I'm getting at is, there's, there's the walls, the car, and then the people sandwich in the middle.
Yep.
Whereas, you don't have that in any other part of the road. Not the bridge, any other part of the road, north or south.
That's the same condition that's out there now, today.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're doing the same thing as there is today and taking safety, you know, this, this is based on safety standards and so forth.
Okay.
So, we're not creating an unsafe condition.
All righty. And I guess that's it for me. Everybody else asked my questions.
Are there any more questions?
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on the costs. Looking at that fifteen percent cost, when I looked under the thirteen B two eighty-three five, it says all maintenance costs shall be borne by the department, not by, there's no fifteen percent match for actual maintenance. And then they refer you to two eighty-three dash one, where they say maintenance is any interim work done to preserve the bridge's structural elements. So, I was, I'm not so sure fifteen percent would be exactly necessarily what we would pay. I think we need some more clarification on that.
Okay. I'd like to note that Council Board of Line did arrive at seven twenty-three. And what would you, what are you looking for from the council tonight?
They're asking guidance on which, on which of these four you prefer. They want to make sure they're going in the right direction. They want to make sure they're going in the right direction.
Shall we do a roll call, which option we are in favor of?
May I ask a question first?
Sure, Counselor Russ.
So before I indicate which way I'd want to go, I would like to know, get a little more clarification on my question that Town Manager Burt just alluded to. So if the future lifecycle cost, which would be maintenance cost, is not 15%, is not covered or cost shared 15% by the town, that, that's a significant difference. So I would like clarification on that before moving forward.
Just a moment, please. I will pull up the actual policy to guide us, if you don't mind, just one second.
Do you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
And I'll just read that part real quick. The state shall bear the full cost of orphaned bridge inspections and maintenance as defined in Section 13B-283-1 of these regulations. Let's see, yeah. And then it goes on to say services provided by the municipality and the railroad in accordance with 13B-283-3 and 13B-283-4 respectively shall be considered as in-kind service contributions. Now imagine if you hit the, you know, the road and the things they say that are our responsibilities, those would be our responsibilities, but I don't think it's necessarily a straight 15% match on all that.
Yeah. So if, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is anything from basically the flat level down is owned by, so under the road, under, under the concrete or under the road is state-owned property. Anything above the road, so all of the asphalt, any of the side structures, the sidewalk, that is owned by the town. So if the future lifecycle costs are not repairing the road, not repairing the siding, not repairing the sidewalk, that is state-owned. I guess that's where I want the clarification.
That would be my interpretation, especially since we've never paid for maintenance costs before.
Yeah, just, the town is responsible for the pavement, the asphalt, and the sidewalks. So the deck and everything below that, like you said, is state.
Yeah, I don't think we pay 15% on that.
So if we are looking, say, alternative, say we go with alternative two, and the initial construction cost is 8,200,000, we're doing 15% of that, but then the 67.1 million would be more state-owned than municipally-owned. I just want to make sure we are making the best financial choice for Groton. And I don't under, I don't have a clear picture of that right now.
Did you find anything else or any other information?
Yet. I guess if you look at this lifecycle cost analysis graph, one thing to keep in mind is that if you do alternative one, two, or three, you're going, you're going to have a 15% full replacement cost in the near future with those, because eventually you're going to have to replace. With alternative four, you're not going to have to replace it again, or as soon as the alternatives one, two, and three.
Alternative three, though, is a 50-year cycle, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But you'll have to, like, in 50 years, you'll have to replace it. So you have that, that cap, that cost has incurred, and you'll have to pay 15% of that future construction.
Thank you.
Dennis, do you have today's cost for number three, option three?
Or the, which one, the...
The upfront cost estimate for construction.
2026 numbers?
Yes, that would be...
7.9 million, about eight million.
Correct.
You'd spend about eight million, and then in 50 years later, you'd have to replace it, and that's another, definitely it'd be more than 14 million by then. So I'm not sure I'd project that at this point, but off the top of my head, but then you'd have to, there'd be another replacement cost in 50 years from now.
There seems to be a point of clarification, if you don't mind. If we say 50 years to a replacement project, you know, that's just in plain language, replacement, that doesn't preclude or that does not include the interim repairs to keep the bridge going in state-of-the-art repairs until the 50 years when we basically say that we can wait no more, and we'd have to replace it then. So in, in the interim 50-year period, there will be work, there'll be done, and those costs are going to be shared at the 15% rate for the town also.
Any other questions? Counselor Board Line?
Thank you. I think it's a little premature to make decisions. First off, some of the slides that are up there, can you make sure those come to us? Because we don't have all of those slides.
Can you send the updated version?
Because the graph, if you, can you go back to the graph that you just showed? I don't have that in my, I don't have that in my either packet. I have a supplemental packet and then the original packet, which doesn't have any of that, the slide that's up, we don't have that slide. And again, to do our due diligence, we do this days and days. We don't even get the packet until Thursday, and then it's all steam ahead to get through this. And so I'm seeing information up here that I was not presented with yet, and then I'm asked to give a direction on a possibility of four options, which all could seem wonderful if I've had some of this data ahead of time. Part of the decision you make is also making sure what's best for the town and the community, and part of that is having the community input and stake involved. And with this, I feel you're asking nine counselors who got new information tonight to figure out which way we want to go, and yet we haven't had a chance to really kind of get a pulse of the community on this. So to me, I think that's inconsiderate, quite frankly, fiscally irresponsible. I want to see numbers, the devil's in the detail. So alternative one, what are we looking at for numbers? Do we have that number as our out-of-pocket? What would that be? Because when you break this down, different levels of the structure are owned by different things. So when you say maybe it's 10%, maybe it's 15, maybe it's this structure, maybe it's that structure, each alternative has a different obligation. So I'd like to see if we're going to come and give you, if I'm obligated to give you a decision tonight on direction, I implore you to give me the numbers that that would be for each alternative. So I'd like to know what the 25-year plan number would be, the 35-year plan, the 50, and the 75. Why? If we're going to do this, you want to do it right. I also want to look at the environmental impact, the sea level rise in that area, how they look at any studies, to make sure below the bridge and all the other things are structurally sound. There's a lot of things that we need to look at. And it might look like right now, oh, option four is the best, or maybe three, but once you pay for three, you might as well go for four. So if you're not going to give me the numbers, I can't make an educated decision. So that's what I'm looking for, plus I'd like all those slides sent to me as well. That's my first question. We need numbers. I can't just say, yep, option three, and then walk out of here and tell everybody, yep, you're going to be paying this much. I don't know. I don't know, they don't know. They think it's 15%. What does each option have for taxpayers' obligation for our town? And that's the direction I'll go in. And then I'll weigh the options, what's the best environmental aspect of that, what's going to give us the longest longevity for our money? If this was my house, I'd want those numbers in front of me. I'm not going to just say, hmm, 25-year plan, option one, like, or, or option two. I need more information. Let's negotiate. Where's our numbers?
I think what you're asking for is this, basically, this is the breakdown, like, the behind-the-scenes lifecycle cost analysis breakdown?
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you, and I can't see any of those graphs, even on my, it's way too small, even on our feet up here. We don't have those in our, our folder. So to me, it's irrelevant information that I cannot read at this time. Unfortunately, I do apologize. I can't see that screen.
If I may, this information can be shared to the municipality, no issues there. The best way to do it is to maybe email it out to the point of contact that we've been communicating with back and forth, to schedule this participation here today.
So we don't have any numbers for each option that we're proposed to make a, you know, educated guess on here tonight? None of the numbers or any of those graphs?
If I may, I think I'm losing the sound here for a second, but we do, I think confused as to the numbers being asked. I believe that we have presented the upfront cost for construction for all alternatives, and we projected out the 15% participation by the town for each one, and we've also projected out to 75 years to give you a full picture as to each, like, to each option basically.
John, can you read those numbers then? Can someone read them? Because you can't see them. I can't see them, they weren't in our packet. What are the numbers?
I don't know if it was that they read the whole spreadsheet.
Or just what, can you tell me what?
Yes.
Option one, what the town would be paying if the 15% or if it's 15%. Option two, what the town's out-of-pocket. Option three and four, if you can just give me those numbers.
That makes sense, so we'll do that in a second here. So alternate one...
I can, I can barely hear him.
Alternate one...
Alternative one would be, the 2026 construction cost is 5.5 million. The town's 50% share would be 825,000. Alt two would be 8.2 million, 2026 construction cost. Town share would be 1.23 million. Alternate three, 7.9 construction cost. Town share of that construction cost is 1.185 million. Alternative four, 13.8 million construction cost. Town share would be 2.07 million. Initial cost.
Okay. Can I, do I still have time? Are we timing here? I'm not sure.
No, go ahead.
We're not timing?
It's not quite working tonight.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So yeah, when you look at this, I mean, I think now, I do think we need more time to digest this. So you're looking at 2.2 million, I mean, for a brand-new bridge, and 1.185 for option, that's a 50-year bridge, I mean, and are we sure these numbers are correct, Town Manager?
I can't verify that.
You can't verify it? And this is based on the 15% or the 50% after the, because he said he used words like 50% of the, so I'm confused as to what our percent is.
Is that 15% for the front?
Town share is 15%.
15.
All right, what we don't know is exactly for ongoing maintenance based on different options.
Right, so I think without that information, I mean, I really can't make a decision if we don't have all those answers. And I was just given these numbers tonight, and then asking for direction. I really do think this should go to the, I think we need some community involvement. I think there needs to be a chance for the community to weigh in on this, too. This is a huge project, huge impact. There might be things that people know about that area that maybe some of us counselors may not know. And part of us knowing information is what we get from our constituents a lot of the time. It's a lot of people that have been here a long, long time and have a lot of history. So I'd like to hear some more. I guess to our, you know, to Greg Hanover, what option are you, do you feel is in the best interest of the town based on what you know is our responsibility? I guess that's one of my questions.
My own personal opinion, I, you know, I don't want to speak for D O two, but I think option three may give you the best value. It's a 50-year for, you know, almost, you know, six million less than a new bridge.
I mean, I think that that's all very interesting and helpful at the same time, so I do think there needs to be some more public input on this. I mean, at this rate, I think all options should be on the table, and we should come back to the table with more information on all of it. I think, you know, the fact that Greg Hanover, who has more of an expertise than I would in this, to say option three, now I have to, you know, punch my numbers and look at this in its entirety and see, you know, what does that look like? And I can't do that right here, right now, and just given the information that we got. That's just me. Is there any reason that we have to make a decision today? Can this come back to the next meeting? We have come into a cow, come out of a cow, come back at many other meetings.
Sorry, we can schedule again soon.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure we can schedule again soon. I'd have to look at, talk to the mayor about the schedule, but sometimes soon.
Is there a deadline is what I'm looking for, or is there something that needs to...
I think they need guidance fairly soon, though.
When is that?
If I may, if the municipality chooses to meet us again to go over this information or to present further information to you, then it's, you know, not an issue to us personally. I think the bigger question is the actual project timeline. This bridge does need work, and we're, and we've created a schedule to, like, to take care of those issues here, and we'd like to keep to the schedule if possible. But if you want to meet us again, that's not an issue prior to a public informational meeting. It's not an issue at all.
I mean, would holding it up one week make a big difference?
Nope, no issues at all for us.
Yeah, next month.
That's all I have for next.
Thank you. Mr. Burt?
I do agree that all four should still, options should still be on the table to have more info, but I do like something like three, because that gives us a lot more flexibility on funding, you know? That's the type of number, if we didn't bond, we could probably do out of a regular, maybe a two-cycle budget process, but...
Counselor Parker?
We'll also talk to the state. Part of these regulations say all federal and state dollars from other sources are eligible for match, so there's no restrictions. We could look at bond-commissioned dollars, other things, so.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question would be if we didn't do option two, but it looks like it has a minimum vertical 20 feet by six inches, and then the rest have 18 feet by eight inches? Is there a specific difference, or I just want to confirm that if we chose a different option, that we're still okay within the minimum vertical clearance for Amtrak?
So we're not making the minimum clearance now? What's the effect, impact if we continue to not, is that the...
I think so, because they all look like they're 18 feet by eight inches on here.
So is it the current?
The current, so it's, that's current, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Alternative one and two does not, actually, one, two, and three does not include raising the profile.
I didn't hear what he said. Can you repeat that?
Alternatives one, two, and three do not include raising the profile to accommodate the vertical clearance.
Okay.
I imagine there's a rule that if, once you totally redo the bridge, then you have to hit that higher number.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Counselor Gajewski?
No, I do not have my hand up. I just had my hand. I did not, no. Okay.
Counselor Board Line?
You know, it's come before us that there's an interest in expanding the commuter, you know, having a commuter rail option in our town. Which option here would look at that long-term plan of trying to bring something like that to fruition?
With the current height at the 18 feet whatever, you know, with newer terrain sizes, is there any issues or restrictions continuing to use the current height? You know, would that impact any future potential enhancement of the system? Any ideas?
We would have to, we have to consult with Amtrak on that.
Right, so again, lucky here to do the people's work, people came before us to speak to that... if it doesn't go through now, one of the criticisms were, was that, oh, our system's old. So if we're going to update, let's update with the intention in mind that we're looking towards a commuter option or the accessibility for our town to have a more open process for our, our community and for folks that live within our town. So again, I still have no information and lacking and still waiting on information for that. So that would be something else I'd love for us to have and have come back to us as well. And if they were to go to another style with the, like, the electric versus the full, there's another model coming out. If we don't go up to the alternative four, would that new model fit? Will it not fit? Would it be behind the curve? Would it have to be replaced again anyway in 25? Because some of the reading I did do with the information I was given, when I was looking at option two and three and I was looking at the disparities there, some areas were saying that they did this several years ago or different states and then they're due in 20 years because if the new cart comes out, they're going to have to raise it. So I just don't want us to double back and double pay either. So that's, that's another concern. So I really want what's best long-term. If option three is, but then in 25 years, we're going to have to make an elevation change, then we better go with four. I'm a little torn here.
Thank you.
That's all.
Anybody else have questions?
Currently, the requirement for electrical rail is 22 and a half feet. So alternative four is the only alternative that accommodates that.
Okay. So.
Did I add to that, please? There's been meetings passed, you know, where the Connecticut DOT has presented the various alternatives and we've been steered down the direction of alternative four due to the various competing forces such as Amtrak or the Amtrak height to the bottom of the steel structure. And we're now, it just seems to me now, it's pretty clear that the municipality is choosing to go back to revisiting other alternatives here. And, you know, while the Connecticut DOT has been pursuing alternative four so far due to prior discussions that included the prior town roads meeting that we held that had municipal officials. And we're now, you know, standing by to hear from you and we'd like to have that happen quicker than later, if possible, the next couple of weeks. But the Connecticut DOT has spent resources to move forward with alternative four due to it being the most prudent alternative after conducting the rehabilitation study report that we mentioned. It's an intensive process that, that includes the environmental considerations, rights away considerations, you know, the roadway standards and geometrics. It includes a complete study to include financials and weighs various alternatives of rehabilitation before even comparing it to the full replacement option. It's called a rehab study report for specifically, you know, that reason of considering rehab options first prior to the replacement alternative being considered. The DOT has performed those studies and we've discussed with the various stakeholders, include the town. And we've brought this back to the upper management and the alternative four has been chosen already as the prudent alternative, given us the best product going on 75 years.
Your point of information?
He's saying that the municipality knew about this. Can you tell me when this transaction happened?
Well, you'll see in the packet, the notes from the actual meeting and Greg and I never gave any indication of a preferred alternative. We just gathered information and I put it out to the council right after that meeting.
So, so my second point of information, additional to it, is that we, as a council, received information, but we never made a decision of the option yet. But the state has with whom?
Whom at the state has made recommendations or a decision? No, he's not there. Do you drop off?
One note, if you look on page 27 of the packet, you'll notice under 13, Mr. Fidell mentioned again, alternative four would be the best solution for the project and it should be discussed with the town council, emergency services. Ms. Burt responded that he would take it to the town council and get the public's input. So we made it clear we wanted public input prior to decision-making.
Sorry about that. I missed the last part.
I'm sorry. Can you tell us who at the state made a decision or has a recommendation on what we do here?
So the bridge projects are basically driven by the division chief level. Division chief is Bart Lomeo Sweeney and he's the one who basically, after listening to the RSR facts and presentations that we put up and the discussions that have been held, he basically, together with the various DOT units, there's probably 20 units involved in this that do participate, Bart Sweeney, you know, weighs those options and chooses the selected alternative that's most prudent for the site. And then there's been participation on the higher levels even to include complete streets design exceptions where we presented that. I don't, you know, don't mean to say that the town's, town council's ability to make decisions financially for the town is basically trumped by that process. Not at all. If you do choose to weigh these options and get back to us strongly with, you know, basically saying that alternative four does not work for you, there's room to have conversations as partners. I do not mean to say that this is a foregone conclusion, but fact still stands that the Connecticut DOT has basically consulted and has proceeded far along with alternative four except, design effort is still preliminary and things could still change.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? So I'm going to take my turn. Mr. Hanover, I'm going to talk to you because you're our public works guy. So you had suggested that maybe alternative three might be a good idea. There's information that's been brought forward about alternative four that may, future train systems may be better suited for option four. And the difference is $900,000. If you, I'm looking at the alternative comparison sheet and if we did alternative three, it says the future lifecycle cost would be like 81.3 million versus option four, which would be 41.5. So even in 50 years, it'll be extensively higher, more than double. So, or about double. Do you think, potentially, thinking of the future trains as well as the, just an increase of 900,000, do you think option four may be better for our community considering?
Yeah. I mean, I can't predict what the trains are going to be.
Neither can I.
10 years from now, little than 75 years. I mean, I'd be interested to know, you know, if it's at 18,8 now, what other bridges along the Amtrak line are there still at that height? You know, if they're trying to get to 22,6 solely, truly over the years because they have plans for that, I don't know. I can't answer that. As far as the future lifecycle costs, I couldn't even, I don't know how that's developed, what they use to develop that cost, so I don't.
Neither can I.
I couldn't even comment on that.
It is, it's quite a bit larger, though.
It is, which is kind of surprising considering you're replacing the whole deck with a new deck, you know, under option three. And all that's remaining is the abutments. So I'm not sure why that cost is so high, but.
Takes into account, takes into account that in 50 years, you have to do another full replacement.
Okay.
Which is also inflated.
Mr. Burt?
I was just going to mention, Mr. Stever's here, but I mean, with him tomorrow, he's been on a lead on the, on the future rail plan, so I could discuss further with him.
Okay. And let's just say we went with option three hypothetically. And let's just say in 20 years, they say we need to raise it up four feet because we're changing trains. How much is that? How much more will that probably cost us? I mean, on top of our percentage that we already put out? So I sort of have concerns and, I don't know. I, it's a hard one on this one. I don't know what the future of trains are. I don't understand the difference of why it would need to be four feet taller and what that would help us in the future with. So we won't be able to come back for potentially another month to make a decision because we don't have another cow until the second week in January. How would this, so you're just saying this would simply change your scheduling? Is that what you're saying? This would just potentially push off the scheduling for one month? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, yes.
So it's up to this council if they are ready to proceed now with a decision or if they would like to wait a month. So we can go around the table and you can say if you choose an alternative or if you would like to wait a month. And then we will go from there, I think.
I have a motion I'd like to put on the floor.
Okay.
I move to postpone this discussion until January 9th, 2024.
Okay. All right.
Just to have the information, get clarification on a few things. I believe we have enough time for that, but that'll give us all what we need.
All right. Motion on the floor is to postpone to January 9th.
Can I have a clarification?
Yes.
Would that, would there be some other public chance for public involvement before that as well with that being moved? So we have a month to kind of really put this on our website, start getting the information out, bring ZEL. I mean, I think ZEL should be part of the discussion today, honestly. I think, you know, are we going to have some community engagement with that prior to that, that time? And how far would this set us back by doing this, moving into the ninth? Like, what ramifications would the town incur by doing such?
For us, none.
And the state?
Just push it back a month, they said.
Okay. So what type of buildup by moving this? What would we be, what are we planning to do with this, this delay? Because if we're not doing nothing, then, I mean, I still want the information, but what is our plan? Are we going to really pipe this information out? Get the information out to all the councilors? Will there be a public information session where people can come comment? I mean.
It's up to the council. With the holidays, I don't know if you can do it too much in advance.
I'm sorry?
With the holidays, I don't know how much advance you'd be doing. I think the first thing is to get the information and go from there.
So I guess the, the mayor, would there be an agenda item where we try to include, because we do come in and out of cows and council, you know, all the time.
This is our last cow of December.
Right. But can't we do a special if we needed to? In time for this, there's ways that we can make, especially for things like this.
I, I think the schedule was already set and I don't know if we need to do a special meeting for that.
We have a lot of staff out for the holidays also and my assistants out for the month for other reasons.
Okay.
Point of information?
Yes.
Could we?
I'm just looking at this. It just seems like one of the decisions is based around the kinds of trains that might come in the next 20 or 25 years. And if the electric ones are 22, need a 22 and a half height rail, could we have the information in the packet that just describes potential rail improvements and the kinds of things that might come? Just so we, just sort of get a sense of if these kind of trains are coming, then that's important to know that we make this at the correct height. If those kinds of trains aren't coming, then maybe the lower height is still good. So just some information on, on the kinds of advancements that, that the trains that are coming that would help make the decision on which height we should really pick. So would be helpful.
I think I have an understanding of what the council needs and will work on that.
All right. Any more comments, questions? Mr. Guyewski?
Thank you, Mayor Frank. I am totally fine with postponing.
I want to add one.
Uh, mayor.
Go ahead. I'll add my comment after yours.
Yeah, thank you. I'm totally fine with postponing. I think that there should be definitely more information provided. One thing I do want to say is I am concerned about is it could be a 75-year lifespan, but evolving technology. And as we discussed about new trains maybe coming out, I think it's better to have as much information as possible before we make a decision on this issue. So I'm in favor of the motion on the table.
I did just want to add one clarification for alternative four. That is also the only alternative where the substructures are going to be moved outside of Amtrak's right-of-way. So I know there's a lot of discussion about achieving the standard vertical clearance for Amtrak, 22-foot-six. But right now, we also don't have the standard horizontal clearance since we are within their right-of-way. So alternative four is the only one that would achieve that as well. So both of those are really major benefits in terms of revisiting this structure, having that 75-year life, having it done now. And then you will not have to worry about any type of accommodations for future trains or future services in this area. If you know it's all set to standards, it's just not of a concern to you. So I just wanted to make sure that that, the horizontal clearance was also considered.
Point. Thank you.
Council Russ?
Jody, just as a follow-up question to that, are the other bridges in the area to that standard? Like, are we going to have one lone bridge in southeastern Connecticut that has this vertical and horizontal structure, but none of the other bridges accomplish that or have that? And therefore, there's no point?
I believe the.
Great question. We probably have the same answer, Kymis. Go ahead.
The Moser Ave Bridge, which is just to the east of this, was recently replaced in the town.
I'm sorry.
Are you aware of that? So that was brought up to, the Moser Avenue Bridge, which is east of this bridge, was recently replaced in the last two years, I believe. And that particular bridge was brought up to standard as well for vertical clearance and horizontal for Amtrak clearances.
Okay. But that's one bridge in southeastern Connecticut.
This design, alternative four, would take that, I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry. That's one bridge. Can you, like, say from New London to, to the end of the state, to Rhode Island, are the, are most of the bridges at this standard or is it the minority?
I can't answer that. I mean, that's something we'd have to ask, ask Amtrak.
That information is something that we can try to look up for you. I can recognize that there are definitely challenges on the clearances, vertical clearance And we try to solve those just like this, project by project. primarily, and we try to solve those just like this, project by project. As, you know, funding comes available and we touch a project site, you know, DOT tends to want to resolve, you know, these issues that could be causing pains in the, the other transportation modes. We definitely tend to want to, to clean up clearance issues primarily due to safety reasons and to federal standards also.
Councilor Pacina?
I understand that there are state grant programs, and are those to help us with Anybody?
There's certainly other sources.
This particular bridge, I, there were discussions internally concerning this particular bridge. This particular bridge does not currently qualify for any other state grant, such as state and local bridge program, for example, or federal local bridge program.
Okay, thank you very much.
But could be a possibility for the bond commission, for the state bond commission is a possibility.
Councilor Bordelain?
The water mains, what are, what are those, what's the long end service of those? Where are those headed?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The water mains, what area is that mainly serving? Is that going into that directly neighborhood? Is that going out further? And where would they be relocated exactly if they're being relocated under options three and four?
It's just basically locating, relocated still to be supported under the bridge, the proposed bridge, but just moving it from the west side to the east of the side of the road. That's just at the bridge location, just to transfer it for staging.
And then, and then is there any other grants or funding if we did go with option four to help with the 15% since, you know, if that's the golden standard for the state of Connecticut, which I can understand, you don't want to fix something and say, mm, okay, you know, no one else is doing it. If that's, we're going to more electric cars, it's a thing to do, if the electric carts are coming, and the life expectancy could be 75 years, and you're spending this top Is there any other funding to help us from environmental, you know, like standpoint of, you know, reaching those goals and doing that and putting the good faith effort for the prediction of the future? Is there any state help that's being seen for that?
None that I'm aware of.
Yes.
Do you have that motion on the floor?
All right.
Are we ready?
Did you want to speak, Councilor Gaiske?
No, I'm ready.
All right, Councilor Jones?
Thank you. The, to qualify for the federal, it looks like 80% federal contribution to this project, you would have to follow federal guidelines. Just, federal guidelines cover both the 18-foot and the 22-foot? Does it, do they, does the federal guidelines matter which height you take? Or are there certain standards that we need to follow in order to get that federal money?
So the, yeah, so the federal money in this project includes 80% federal funding, and just like the federal local bridge program with the federal funding, there are strings attached to that funding, and you have to bring everything up, up to federal standards, and the vertical clearance is one of the other things that is taken into consideration with that funding.
So if we didn't, so if, if we don't go to the correct height for the federal funding, then we would, wouldn't get the federal funding, is that right?
Say that again?
If we don't, if we didn't go to the height for the federal funding, then we would not get the federal funding, is that correct? I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what's the federal standards for a bridge like this? Is it 18 feet or is it 22 feet, or do they care?
The, that, that standard is the Amtrak standard, which is also federal. So it's the 22 and a half is what's required for the electrified rail system for Amtrak, which is federal.
So if you build, then you get.
So if we pick options one, two, or three, do we get federal dollars? Because we're not going to the correct height that they want.
Well, you're not rebuilding it, and those, you're not building new, so you wouldn't.
So the federal standards only kick in if we're building new. If we're not building new, but just sort of doing a repair, we still get federal dollars?
If that was the case? If, if, if that was required, these wouldn't be legitimate options.
Thank you.
So no, it's not required.
So to do, to do a repair, it's not required that we have to go to the 22, only if we replace the bridge do we have to go to the 22. But either way, we still get federal dollars, correct? The, the federal standards aren't forcing us to go to the 22. Is that right? If we do just.
And what if you built, if you took four?
So, um, just to clarify, federal, so the guidelines, kind of, they do recognize constraints where certain bridges just can't be raised to a certain height just because of the existing constraints geometrically, and we can follow guidelines that basically can deviate from the maximum allowable, which is, or the 22.5 to 18.5, Dennis, is it? 18.5?
Yeah.
That would be for, that would be for rehab work that is not as extensive as the bridge replacement type of work.
Okay.
That's just basically recognizing that some sites are just, you know, going to be, you know, very, very difficult to, to raise the profile to the 22.5 minimum.
Okay, no, I understand, I understand. So basically, if we do options one, two, or three, we can still, we still get the 80% federal funds for this project? We're not having to cover the whole thing?
It's my understanding that.
Is that?
So yes, the, the federal funding goes with the orphan bridge statutes. Basically, whatever structural work gets done here due to the fact that it's a bridge that doesn't quite have a clean ownership, hence the name orphan, it's basically, the Connecticut legislature has passed statutes to address the lack of ownership, and this is the next best thing that they figure is going to be best, is to use the state's 80% normal federal share, kick in 5% state share, and ask the municipality that owns the roadway to basically kick in 15%. So either way, federal share is going to be participating here.
Okay, that's great.
Madam Mayor, we have a motion on the floor that we're not addressing. So the motion on the floor is to move the question, which should be, what we're debating is the motion on the floor, not additional questions.
The motion on the floor is to postpone to January 9th, and I think you're correct in that we should probably get moving on and ask questions that are pertinent to whether you would like to postpone or not postpone. Councilor Merritt?
In that consideration, I'll rescind my request to speak.
Okay, I have a question, and this is in relation to whether I would like to postpone or not. Asking the state, if we said to you, we are between option three and four, can you go forward with your motions of opening this up to the community input, and continue forward at this moment? Or do you need a directive of either alternative three or four?
I'm, I'm not clear on, on the question, I'm sorry.
If we said we are debating between option three and option four, can you continue to move forward? Or do you need a directive of one or the other to schedule public hearings and other things that you may be scheduling next?
The decision to go forward should come first just because of the resources attributed to each and the ability for us to really gain much by moving either direction. If, if we move with the option three, we are foregoing certain effort that's needed for option four, and, and vice versa, really.
Not quite sure if that answers my question. If we had an answer for you by next month, and we said we are debating between, just say, option three and four, can you continue to move forward and start scheduling public hearings to have input and things of that nature if we get an answer to you by January 9th?
But, but it seems like the answer would be two different alternatives, basically, to be carried forward, and the answer to that is that that would require too much resources to have to, to parallel two options. It's very resource-intensive to do that, and we could still present conceptual, conceptual plans and conception, conceptual cross-sections and the likes to the public, and basically tell them the two alternatives they were looking at, but ultimately Connecticut DOT is, has got a pretty standardized way of presenting the alternatives to the public, and we like to propose, or to actually present the proposed alternative upfront. And we can then kind of like specify the other choices that are still, or that were looked at, but it's very, it's not as efficient to present two options to the public as it is the primary option and then the alternatives that we considered along the lines also.
So are you telling me you would have your public hearing before January 9th?
No, ma'am.
When do you think you would have a public hearing?
I think I could have a clarifying comment. So we typically, right, so at this stage, you know, Dennis has gone through all of the concepts and the selected alternative from here, the designer will take over, and we would complete 30% of the design, we would complete the preliminary design for the selected alternative. That preliminary design is what gets presented to the public, and then, as Francisco was saying, you know, if there's other alternatives, we could include that as well, but that's why we'd like to have the selected alternative now, because we have to complete that 30% of the design before it gets presented.
Thank you. Do you have a clarifying question?
Yeah, I, and it's pertaining to my decision on the motion on the floor.
You have spoken twice, so it has to be clarifying, okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll hold it, I'm sorry. I mean, I guess it's clarifying. When did this, I'll hold it, never mind. There's so many unanswered questions in this packet.
Councilor Merritt?
I, I hope that this is in line with the motion, but it's going to keep me up all night. I have a question. This increase in height, does this have anything to do with the voltage that's running the trains, or is this just the physical height of the vehicles?
Is that in line with the, it would have to be there.
Well, you've spoke twice and you're pretty open.
You said it was.
I think what it allows, I can try to answer part of that. I can try, I can try to answer part of that. That extra vertical clearance is, it allows the, right now, those, the catenary wires are actually connected to the beams, the bottom of the beams. So with the extra vertical clearance and that, the lines and, and the structure itself can be more independent, so it actually provides more clearance and safety.
All set? Councilor Russ?
I'm just going to suggest that we all have a lot of questions that haven't been addressed tonight. If we have more questions, that we direct them to the town manager who could forward them to the appropriate parties, and hopefully on the 9th, we have a lot more information. In the meantime, I believe we have a mayor, council, or we have a council meeting in the meantime, in there? Am I right on that?
Shh.
On the second.
On the second.
At which point we have public comment, people could come up and, and speak at that point. So I'm going to suggest we take the vote, and I'm suggesting we move forward to the 9th to continue this conversation.
Thank you, and let's, Councilor Pacina?
I, I too would like to move forward to the 9th, but I would like to see maybe a representative from Amtrak if, if at all possible, or at least some kind of information from them directly, of what they need and how this is going to affect their operations.
Okay, with that, let's take a motion to postpone. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstention. One that passes, oh, eight and zero to one. Okay, let's take a little break for about 10 minutes, and we'll reconvene.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
We need to say abstain, please.
Abstain.
Councilor Merritt?
Thank you, as part of the record.
Can we keep going? Is there any way we can keep going?
No. I would like a break, it's been two hours, so I'd like a break. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
How long is our recess?
Let's just take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess, sorry. Five-minute recess, sorry.
No, there's nothing with this.
No, so, wait a minute. Did we not get it?
Returning from break at 8:44, and just to note, we took break at 8:35 to 8:44. Next on our agenda is Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan Progress Update. Okay.
It's not recording?
John's coming in. Yeah, we don't have John back yet.
Not ready for that yet.
I saw you looking at him, don't be shy.
I heard that. There it comes.
Recording in progress.
You good?
We are ready to go forward. Do you have a presentation for us?
Oh, yes, so, good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. With me here tonight is...
Megan Granado, Sustainability and Resilience Manager for the Town of Grotto.
And we're just going to give a little bit of an overview on a project that we've been working on for over a year. We're not looking for any decisions from the council tonight. We don't have design alternatives that you need to vote on or anything like that, but more kind of a status update on this project. Talk a little bit about some of the recommendations that we're working on, a couple of takeaways, but just, it's more informative. And then, next month, we're planning on coming back to you to talk a little bit more broadly about sustainability, resiliency efforts in the town, and maybe thinking about some goals for the future and that, just because we've been doing a lot over the past year, getting a lot of grants. We got a couple more after our last council meeting that were announced, and we have another one that we can't tell you about yet, but that we'll be able to announce soon, too. So there's just a lot of good stuff happening. So with that said, yeah.
That would be great, yeah. Okay, great, thanks all. So, like John said, talking about the Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan, really brief overview, you know, we didn't want to just hit you with a 100, 200-page draft report, we wanted to talk about the process that we've gone through to date, and all the work that we've put in place to get to where we are in the process. So we're going to talk a bit about the project approach, vulnerability assessment, of course, the draft recommendations, which are still very draft. We'll kind of explain where we are with those, next steps, and then, of course, leave time for our conversation afterwards. Wanted to point out, this is a grant-funded project. This funding support came through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's Long Island Sound Futures Fund, so very appreciative of that program for its support. And, of course, we'll start with an overview. So outlined in red is the study area. To give you a little bit of orientation, this is West Main Street, running east-west right here, this is the Baskel Bridge. So it goes down to Tufts Cove, and this is the Amtrak alignment in the south. Up here, we have, this is Allen Street and Pequot Ave. And I always like to include definitions when we're using these types of words. So with resiliency, we are looking at how we are able to withstand risks and negative impacts specifically for this project. It's withstanding the risks and impacts of climate change hazards. And sustainability is all about putting decisions in place today to help create future, healthier future conditions, and we're trying to do that through the development of these draft recommendations that we'll be talking about. So a little bit more specifically on the climate hazard side, we are focused on three main categories of climate hazards. The first being coastal flooding, so of course, sea level rise, storm surge, but that's not the only flooding hazard we have here. We also have flooding from those really big precipitation events we've been having that tend to overwhelm our stormwater systems, they can overwhelm our riparian systems, our streams as well. And then, lastly, we're also looking at heat, and we'll talk about projections for all of these in just a moment. Wanted to make it clear, we're not doing this alone in a silo. Our office has been implementing this project, but we've been working really closely with GZA, Geo-Environmental, as our consulting firm. We also have a steering committee that's been providing high-level guidance throughout the entire process, helping direct us with all the steps that we take. And the project approach is really like a three-part, three-part approach. The first is doing a vulnerability assessment, and that's understanding the extent of the problem, right? So we have these climate hazards, we want to know how are they impacting the study area, what's that going to be looking like in future years? And then, of course, you pivot into, okay, we understand the problem, what are we going to do about it? Really wanted to stress that community engagement was a very big part of this throughout the entire process. And to kind of hammer that home, we have another slide that outlines a lot of the approaches that we took. We really tried to get out in the community with this one. We held a number of public meetings in the project area, actually, at Union Baptist Church, had really great turnout to those, which was fantastic. We did field assessments, where we knocked on doors, door by door, in the floodplain, and talked to people about the flooding they experienced, about aspects of their homes that might make them more vulnerable to flooding. We did a midpoint survey, we pushed things like Greater Groton. The day has been fantastic about supporting us. We did specific targeted outreach to the business community, you know, so just trying to highlight, we used a number of different approaches to try to get people's input on this issue, and what they thought we should do about it.
And we were really trying to focus on getting out into that community, into the project area. The only meetings that we've had that have really, say, been in this building have been a council meeting like this, or our steering committee meetings, where we're just trying to get feedback from people on the more technical details of it. But otherwise, really trying to get out and engaged with the people that it's impacting the most.
And, you know, where that paid dividends is our understanding of the problem. So, a perfect example, when we were doing field assessments, a number of people who lived on Pearl Street said, you know, I heard stories that back way, way, hundreds of years ago, all this area used to be open water. So we reached out to Groton Public Library and the Mystic River Historical Society. We pulled a number of historical maps and found out that that's actually true. So the area circled in red here, this is what Pearl Street is today, it used to go around this inlet. Pearl Street was actually called Cove Street back then. And I also like to point out, this area just south of West Main Street, that was all open water, too. So these are areas that, over time, fill material was placed, and that are built on top of. And why that's important is that we still see that, you know, land use those decisions in terms of how water moves through that system today, and where the flooding shows up. So really, you add it a lot to the value of our understanding of the complexity of the problem. So switching gears, wanted to talk a little bit more specifically about those climate hazard and projections. Going to start with sea level rise. We're really fortunate that CIRCA, which is the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, is part of the steering committee for this, and they shared with us the results of the Mystic River modeling study that they've done, and these are images from that study. So on the left, this is the area that you expect to be flooded by a 10-year storm. That's a storm that has a 1 in 10 chance of occurring any given year. So not a super common storm, but not a super uncommon storm either. And then, image on the right to compare is what the 10-year storm looks like with 20 inches of sea level rise added on top of it. I also want to point out, what's really valuable about these images is that they don't just show the areas to be flooded, but they show you depths. So this over here, the color gradient, shows you the expected depth of water. So you can see that adding 20 inches of sea level rise, not only does it really expand, now we have a lot of flooding in Pearl Street, you know, we're picking up some other flooded areas, but those depths are also increasing. And then you overlay that with our built environment, and we look at the number of structures to be impacted. So, quick comparison, the 10-year storm today, you have about 41 structures and half a mile of road that are in that area, that you expect to be vulnerable to flooding. That goes up to 96 structures and 0.9 mile of road, when you add 20 inches of sea level rise. Should also highlight, you know, you might be asking, why 20 inches? That is a CIRCA recommendation, that we plan for 20 inches by 2050, they've made that recommendation statewide, so that's what we're applying here. So you can see, it's really amplifying the number of vulnerable structures that we have in this area. This is the same comparison, but with a 100-year storm, so this is like a once-in-a-lifetime storm, right? This is much bigger magnitude, even the superstorm Sandy. So a rare storm, but you can start to see, again, doing that comparison, some really alarming depths coming into play. Yellow is eight feet. And so, again, you're seeing that the addition of sea level rise is just making the conditions, if we were having one of those storms, all the more dire. And again, doing that comparison, there's about 212 structures in the current 100-year floodplain, that only goes up to about 223, I think, when you add sea level rise. The floodplain can't move west anymore, because you have the big change in topography with the rock outcropping there. Also point out, the FEMA maps here are a little bit less conservative than the, or they're more conservative than the CIRCA images, so you see bigger areas of flooding. But still, these are some of the, you know, the assessments we were looking at in terms of understanding, okay, what do we have at risk here? And again, it's not just coastal flooding. These images, which I won't belabor too much, just show, in the Northeast, we've already experienced a really big increase, about 38% increase, in the amount of rain coming in the heaviest vents, right? Our really big rainstorms are getting more severe, and we're getting more of them. And that's a trend that's going to continue in the future, that's only going to become, you know, even more significant in terms of that, what we're seeing with the "rain bomb" kind of things that people call. This was a really quick model, looking at stormwater runoff for a fairly common storm. So highlighting areas that might have flooding during, you know, a fairly typical rainstorm, and you can see Pearl Street is up here, we know that we have stormwater flooding issues there. Moving on to heat, New London County typically had about four days above 90 degrees historically. By mid-century, we're going to be looking at more like 15 to 21. And where that becomes, you know, even more relative is when you combine it with humidity. So that's the heat index, and that's how your body feels the heat. So 90 degrees combined with the levels of humidity we have in the summer here puts you at the risk of heat cramps, heat exhaustion likely, with heatstroke possible with prolonged exposure, right? So when we think of someplace like Mystic, we have a lot of outdoor festivals, we have a lot of people outside, you know, walking, going between the stores, we think a lot about that exposure, and what we need to put in place to help people keep protected, honestly, from that type of risk. So I know that was rapid-fire, we're throwing a lot at you, but we also wanted to save some time for the recommendations. And like I said, these are still very draft. So we've been working with a consultant, we've worked with a steering committee, we have another steering committee to finish our discussion about this tomorrow. And then from there, we will be posting the draft report and recommendations online, and we're and we're also having another public meeting coming up. So, want to press upon you, this isn't, we're not looking for your, you know, we're not looking for detailed feedback, just initial reactions to these, but wanted to introduce these concepts to you at this point in the process where we can still make adjustments.
Yeah, I think our next meeting is at January 4th.
Fourth, correct.
Yeah. And that'll be kind of the final public outreach, wrap-up on this, finalize the plan, and then in the future, we can talk about some of those recommendations and how we want to prioritize them. But again, we'll get into those a little bit now.
And to give a little bit of an overview, right, there's no one magical cure for this. There's no one thing that we can invest in that's going to solve all these problems. There's a number of different types of strategies that you can use in terms of structural fixes, nonstructural, whether you're trying to keep the water away, whether or not you're going to allow the water to come in. And so, we tried to take a balanced approach of including a lot of different strategies. We also wanted to include multiple audiences, right? So, this report isn't just about what the town should do, but also gives recommendations as a region, what we should be thinking about with our regional partners, what individual property owners, best practices they can be using as well. And we have it organized by recommendations for the region at first, and then kind of sub-areas within that red outlined box, because like we learned, the nuances of all these areas differ somewhat. So, we wanted to give more targeted suggestions for each, and I'll start with the regional recommendations. And at this point, like John says, we not prioritize these, and so, this is not presented in any particular order. But we have included ideas like floodwalls and levees, as well as a downstream barrier. A lot of people asked us, well, could the Amtrak Bridge be used as a storm surge barrier? Hypothetically, it could, right? The report will go into the pros and cons of these different approaches, and also vary ballpark estimates of costs. Some of these things hypothetically could be done, but at such a price point that it's really prohibitive. So, the report will go into that level of information. A stormwater runoff study is also going to be recommended, I think specifically looking at the Pearl Street area. Like we saw, we know that we have stormwater issues there. And so, trying to really understand the source of the water and if there's ways that we can help put planning in place to address the flooding. Tie gates and backflow preventers, that's essentially when you have a storm drain pipe and at the end of the pipe, it outflows, right? If it's outflowing into the Mystic River, when the Mystic River comes up, you could have water actually coming back into those pipes from the river. So, a backflow preventer stops that from happening. So, that's an example of something that we'll be talking with Director Hanover about potentially putting in as a CIP. Roadway elevation feasibility study, there is federal funding that will support these types of studies, so we're going to be really seriously looking at that. And then, you know, the steering committee said, it's only fair if we're talking about the full breadth, right? Here, that no action as a deliberate choice is something that's also on the table. It's certainly not one that we're promoting, but there is also a distinction of making the choice to do no action at a particular time because maybe an impact isn't severe enough, and then saying, but in 10 years, the action is warranted, right? So, that's also just in the mix of how we plan these things out over time. Also, making recommendations around looking at our regulations to see if there's upgrades that we could be making there to add protections. CIRCA has a new toolkit that provides kind of ideas for different overlays and things like that, sort of planning and zoning approaches that different towns have taken, that we'll be looking at. Flood warning system, just helping keep people safe and protected outside of areas that have inundation. And with all of this, of course, continued partnership building, education, and support is going to be necessary throughout. To highlight some of those sub-area ideas, with the areas that have resonances, you know, some of the recommendations are consistent around best practices, making sure people have sump pumps. It was really surprising that you'd go to one house and they had three sump pumps, and you'd go next door and they're slightly higher and they won't have any. Same thing about wet and dry floodproofing. A lot of people think that with historic homes, it's impossible to do wet and dry floodproofing, but there actually are options, and so that could be one of those education pieces that maybe we put some more work into. With Pearl Street, again, using a potential stormwater study to then figure out if there's ways that we can upgrade and expand the stormwater system, to try to take some of the pressure off there. We already have recommendations for floodproofing, the Gravel Street Pump Station, and I believe we have a CIP in from last year. So, just focusing on the importance of getting that work done to protect that critical infrastructure. Similar kind of recommendations for Water Street as well. West Main Street is where we have some of the recommendations kicking around heat, that being such a corridor of where we have a lot of people visiting the area. So, measures to increase shade through awning, potentially through shade trees. I know space is really limited down there, so seeing if there's different kind of innovative approaches we can use to help get some more shade. Temporary cooling measures being something that maybe we start recommending for those large outdoor events, having pop-up tents that people can use to get some relief from the heat, for example. And then, again, recommendations, potentially some floodproofing. Something that came out of conversations with resonances was this idea around material stockpiling. You know, we talked to a lot of folks who said, gosh, when the storm's coming, I try to get a generator. I try to rent one because I don't have space to store one onsite, and they're impossible to get because everyone else had the same idea, right? So, questions around sandbag availability as well. Could the town potentially, does the town provide sandbags? Could we provide sandbags? Could we have some of the materials closer by? So, that's something that we kind of want to flesh out a little bit further as well. And then, lastly, want to highlight some recommendations around the upper watershed, which we're calling kind of like High Street and to the west. This area, actually, the stormwater system does connect to the stormwater system down here, right? Because it all outfalls in the Mystic River. And so, the best things that we can be doing up here in the upper watershed is trying to keep water out of that system, because all it's doing is going downhill and adding to the flooding that we're seeing down at Pearl Street and West Main. So, potentially, you know, outreach with local landowners about green infrastructure, rain gardens being a good example of trying to get the water to infiltrate in place. I know you all had some preliminary discussions earlier in the year about stormwater authority, potentially revisiting that as a tool to get funds that we could use for some of these flood resiliency measures could be another topic that we want to consider a little bit And so, next steps from here is continuing to refine. Like I said, we're going back to the steering committee tomorrow. We will be posting draft recommendations online and trying to get feedback that way as well. We have our third public meeting scheduled for January 4th at St. Mark's, right on Pearl Street. And eventually, we'll be finalizing, sharing the report, of course, and then immediately switching into implementation. So, like I mentioned, some of that, we're taking a look right now at possible CIPs. I already mentioned grant proposals that we're eyeing as well. One exciting note, as we just found out, we were accepted again by University of New Hampshire's Summer Fellowship Program for Sustainability. So, that means we're going to be hosting a fellow this summer, and their entire focus is actually going to be working with local businesses throughout Groton on that resilience building type of support. So, helping bring capacity to help local businesses look at disaster planning checklist, make sure that they have the processes and the materials in place they need to protect themselves and get their doors back open if a flood were to happen.
So, you know, a few big key takeaways. It's getting hotter. We need to deal with it. We're getting more extreme rain events, and the frequency of them happening is more. And then, coastal flooding, climate change, sea level rise. We have to address these. With this project, we looked specifically at Mystic. We had applied for a grant for it and just really did a deep dive into Mystic. Soon, we'll be looking at a larger townwide climate action plan. We have funding. We're waiting on some grant paperwork from the state to get that project, but that'll kind of address the needs for the whole town. So, if people think, well, why are we focusing just on Mystic? It's because the specifications of what the funders were looking for, we were able to kind of dial it in for this. But so, those are some of the key takeaways, and this is something that we can't keep kicking the can down the road. We can go after federal funds and other funds to help initiate and start some of these projects, but with some of these things, we're going to have to incorporate some of our own CIP dollars into them. So, as we start getting into these recommendations, we want to have those conversations with the council. That's where we're going to start getting some rubber hitting the road and thinking about, what are the things that we can do, that we do want to spend money on, working with, you know, Public Works, with Parks and Rec, and the council to identify some of these items that are easily implementable to do, that, you know, less costly, that can have a big impact. And then, at some point, we're going to be biting some bigger ones on, bigger bullets on these. Happy to answer any questions. I know we just threw a lot out at you.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Megan and John. It's exciting. We're excited when you came on board, and we're already seeing some great results that are coming from grants and things.
So, I think that's fantastic. You had mentioned in here, in the sort of typical storm, this weekend, we had a pretty intense storm, and I've noticed, you know, all our rain is now much more intense. We have much, you know, heavier storms that happen, having greater frequency. Is the storm this weekend similar to what you are sort of using as an example in your report of sort of our new typical storms?
I was actually surprised. A coworker and I went and drove through downtown Mystic yesterday morning to take a look at the flooding, and I was actually pleasantly surprised that it wasn't nearly as bad as I thought it might be. The big storm that I'm using, I think was about a 10-year storm, is December 23rd of last year, and that's what a lot of these photos, sorry, I can't go backwards, or maybe I can't. A lot of the photos throughout the presentation were from that December 23rd storm. We had a lot of standing water. This one might, that one might have been. Sorry, I thought it was going to be easier to get there. We had a lot of standing water on Pearl Street. We had a lot of issues.
I noticed we had a lot of standing water at Aquanic Plains.
Yes.
This time, seemingly more than we kind of normally have. I mean, usually that floods, but this time it seemed much more intense, a lot more, it was spread a lot further.
Yeah, agreed. When I came in off the highway, I saw that and said, oh, gosh, I'm really concerned with what Mystic looks like.
So, it's storms like that that you're sort of focusing in on. In the structural area section of this, are you going to be putting any sort of rough costs on what some of these things at, once you release the final report?
The consultant will. It's hard to ballpark, because you can imagine some of those huge projects. It can be all over the place, but they are going to, and probably one of those like dollar size scale kind of approaches, show the magnitude, right? Is this something that's like a $10,000, $100,000, bigger and bigger, to give some sort of context for the financial impact of those options, yeah.
And when the final report comes out, are you, I'm anticipating that each one of these sections will be flushed out with a lot of detail and action items. Is that sort of what you're anticipating?
Yeah, so all the draft recommendations will have descriptions of exactly what that is, the pros and cons of it. For the vulnerability assessment, we have a huge chapter that really shows the ins and outs of the impact, so yeah, the report will be pretty robust.
And just, the final question I have here is sort of when is, I know you have some meetings coming up and some public stuff, when is the sort of final report sort of due? Is there a date?
Beginning of February.
Beginning of February, okay. So, fairly soon.
Fairly soon.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and so, you know, we didn't distribute a draft report yet, because we're still working on the draft right now. We just wanted to give a broad overview to the council, so there was an understanding of what the project is. We'd love to see all of you, or some of you, at the January 4th public outreach meeting that we have on this. I know a number of you have come to some of the other meetings that we've had in the past, so great to have any of you that could come there. Again, this report that comes out is not going to be a full detailed analysis, engineering level study of every single recommendation, but it's really, what are the things we have identified? What's the feedback we've gotten from the public? And a lot of recommendations of some things that we'll have to do some deeper dives into specifically, but identifying the impacts of each of those potential recommendations.
Cool. All right. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Grayaski?
Two quick questions. The first one is pretty simple. The last public meeting, you said January 4th at St. Mark's Church, and what time is that at?
Doors are going to open at 5:00 with a presentation at 5:30. We'll have some posters and things for people to look at in the meantime.
Okay. And then, my next question was, I know we talked about storm runoff. Is there an impact of snow when it happens and like the potential of melting? Could you like, explain, could you go a little bit more in-depth about that for me, please?
Yeah, sure. I mean, snow melt acts very similar to precipitation. Obviously, you might have concentration of snow that's piled in certain areas, but I mean, it's all water that eventually melts and then moves the way that water moves through that area.
So, just to clarify, it's just, it's basically precipitation over a longer period of time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions, comments? Councilor Jordan?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions. Just want to thank you for the work and the effort. I mean, I think everything that you presented forward, you know, fits with the plan of looking at normal sea level rise and water and heat that is very researchable and is out there and very knowledgeable to folks that follow this, so it's great to have something to share. So, I appreciate your time and effort. One of the other concerns that folks are talking to me about is about the water cables. So, like, we're talking, you know, a lot of things in here. Talks about, well, hey, putting out the floodwalls. Like, Westley has some floodwalls way down by their docks and stuff and things like that, but when you look at some of the places, even like Aquanic Plains, there's talk that face that they filled in, you know, in that area, looking at Aquanic, you know, PQ and all that area. It's all very low lying. They're getting a lot of table, a lot of groundwater coming up. So, my hope is to look at ways that we're going to address some of that down the road as well, because with these storms, sometimes it's not just, it's the sea level rise, and then you have the water cable coming up. Also, getting education to people to make sure that they're having alternatives when the power goes out. A lot of people are not prepared. I know for myself, I do, like, I tune in like Ryobi, is my electrical, actually, you know, having a shop vac available, because if the power goes out, your electric shop vac doesn't work, your electric sump pump doesn't work. What's your alternative to your, because a lot of people don't have the generator that can support their sump pump, their refrigerator. And so, those are some other things. Or having an alternative backup, if you're in a high water table and a flood area, making sure that you have a particular generator or backup source that's going to kick on for your sump pump. A lot of folks have been stuck, and then all those things are in place, and then they didn't have the mechanism. So, there's a lot to it. And yeah, what time is the, on the 4th at St. Mark's?
So, doors will open at 5:00 with a presentation at 5:30.
Right. But again, thank you for, you know, the information, and, you know, it definitely, history is knowledge, understanding how, there's a lot of areas in the area that we're backfilling. People are mesmerized, and they're like, wait, this is all water? Oh, yeah. And you have groundwater coming up, you know? So, in addition to the heavy rainfall, when that river rises, you know, I have a friend on Pearl Street who, as soon as that river rises from just a little bit of rain, their sump pump has to kick on, the groundwater. And some people say, oh, you can have a lot of rain, or it didn't seem like much was going on, but if it's just the consecutive rains of low amounts over the last, like, say, three weeks, that ground table water is very high. So, interested to see if there's any ways to help, kind of talk about that. Again, as always, thank you for your efforts, and I'm glad that we have you on board and we're talking about these things. And you stated that we can't keep kicking this down the road. We've got to get, we have to have an action plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any further comments, questions?
All right. Well, I thank you for coming, and I think this is on point, that something, we had to investigate exactly what the best answers are for this, and I personally don't know, but we are getting a lot of flooding, more so, and the heat does seem to be an issue as well as just the climate changing before us. And how are we going to bounce back from these events as quickly and swiftly as possible? And I appreciate all you're doing, and I hope you come up with some great ideas, and thank you for all the grants that you're getting. It's amazing. So, to help pay for some of these things and to figure out the issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Next item on our agenda is town attorney presentation. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Kristi Kelly. I'm from the law firm of Sussman Shapiro and I'm the town attorney. I wanted to take the opportunity to say congratulations to all the new people and say, nice to see you again, to all the folks who have been here. Previously, I just thought it would be a good opportunity tonight to talk to you about a few items, but also to introduce myself to you. Like I said, I'm from the law firm of Sussman Shapiro. And I focus my practice on Connecticut municipal law and public sector labor and employment law. I've been practicing law for 22 years. And the majority of that time has been spent in public sector labor and municipal, public sector, general government and labor law. I spent seven years at a large Connecticut law firm before I took off to the West Coast where I worked at the federal level for the Department of Defense in Alaska. I worked there, was there for several years before moving on to Washington State where I worked at the state level for the Attorney General's Office, primarily focusing in labor law there. And then I returned to Eastern Connecticut about 10 years ago. And I've been at Sussman Shapiro focusing at local level law, municipal and labor law. I've been the town attorney for about a year now. My firm, however, has represented the town of Groton for, goodness, 20, 20 years or so, 20-plus years. So, besides myself, often you might see one of my colleagues appear before you on any type of matter. Rich Cody, Eric Callahan, Ray Barabo, Rob Kabel. We regularly work on the town's labor work in the areas of land use, tax appeals, tax collections, labor and workers' comp. And I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight to be able to, one, introduce myself, but also to touch on some highlights that I think are, it's important and it's a probably a good refresher for those of you who've been on the council previously and certainly for the new folks. I want to talk through a couple of things. Your role as a town councillor, as a member of the legislative body of the town, and how that role might differ from the role of the town manager, who's the executive of the town. I want to touch briefly on a recent expansion of some Connecticut, of a Connecticut law, the anti-discrimination laws, and how that affects you folks as a municipal board and council. And I also wanted to make a shameless plug for the nuances of the attorney-client privilege that protects the communications between the town and yourself, between the town and my office. And so just, I want to make sure that we're, we're all sort of on the same page and hopefully answer any questions that you might have. I don't know how, this being my first opportunity to come and give a presentation like this, I often start with a very, very basic overview. Generally speaking, municipalities are creatures of state statute and they exist in accordance with the statutory framework of the Connecticut general statutes. I brought this book for effect. I love books. This is title seven of the Connecticut general statutes and it, the entire title is dedicated to municipalities. So this sits in my office and I refer to that, that particular title quite often. But under Connecticut law, I don't know if any of you are familiar, what's known as the Home Rule Act. But the Home Rule Act is fantastic, in my opinion, because it allows a municipal corporation such as the town of Groton to be able to create a charter or a set of ordinances or both that can vary from the way that the Connecticut statutes prescribe how a municipality functions or governs itself. And essentially, under the Home Rule Act, municipal charters and ordinances essentially trump the state statutes. Here in Groton, and it's not the same in all municipalities, but here in Groton, we have a very nicely organized, fairly thorough, and, and pretty, pretty useful town charter and a robust charter and set of ordinances. And, and so, you know, I urge you, I think in the packet that you received tonight in preparation for this meeting, a copy of the town charter is, is in there. That's a great first source to refer to, to understand the roles and responsibilities of the town council, the RTM, and the town manager, and certainly the town attorney, and how everybody interplays together. Under the Home Rule Act, it's important to remember that the order of authority is first the charter, then the ordinances, and then the state statute. If you can find the answer in the charters or the ordinances, then certainly the statutes are simply there when there isn't a charter or ordinance that speaks to a particular topic or a particular procedure in the charter and ordinances. So in the Groton Town Charter, it vests legislative authority in you, the town council, and the representative town meeting. The charter articulates what business falls within your purview as a town council and what business falls within the RTM. In particular, 4.1.2 delineates the specific legislative business that the RTM is responsible for. The way that I and those in my office tend to look at it is the RTM is responsible for the budgetary side of the legislation of the town and, and you as the town council are the policy ordinance and the organization of personnel. That's, that's sort of a very basic delineation. And so if you look in 4.1.2 of the charter, it articulates the specific legislative authority that the RTM has. And under Section 5, that relates to the legislative authority that the town council has, which is you guys. And basically, the way that the town charter articulates it is that the town council is the legislative body having powers and duties conferred by the Connecticut general statutes on all councils and selectmen and other powers and duties provided by the charter except those that are reserved to the RTM. The reason it's, it's important to understand the nuance between the town council is you have, you certainly have broad legislative authority in town, but then you also have a town manager, which is, the town manager is the chief executive officer and is directly responsible for the administration of all town departments, agencies, and offices and the persons that are employed there. It's the town manager who's responsible to see to it that all the laws and the ordinances are governing the town are faithfully executed. And, and certainly, as a labor lawyer, I think it's important that there's an understanding between the council and the town manager, that it's the town manager that shall report and, I'm sorry, appoint and remove department heads or officers, except for elected department heads and elected officers. And certainly, under the charter, it articulates, under Section 5, the appointment authority of the town council related to administrative, the agency boards and commissions, ABCs. Why this is important, from my perspective as a labor attorney, and certainly as set forth in the charter, is your role as the town councillors is to, is to set the big picture, to set the big picture in terms of the, the structure of the departments. What departments are we going to have in town government? What, and, and how many positions are we going to have in those departments and what the salaries are going to be for those, those folks? That's all within your purview. In terms of who fills the position and who manages those positions on the day-to-day, that falls with the town manager. It's expressly stated in the charter that neither any member of the RTM nor any member of the council interact or direct, I want to use the correct words, shall not give orders to any subordinates of the town manager either publicly or privately, and that the town council shall deal officially with town staff through the town manager. Why this is important from a labor perspective? One, well, generally, if you're, if the town manager, if, if the town councillors are interacting and engaging directly with the department heads or their subordinates or the town personnel, it could undermine the authority of the town manager. It could render the town manager ineffective. Certainly, we don't want that to happen, but from a legal perspective, there's other, there's other reasons. The vast majority of the town employees are unionized. They, and, and the communications and the discussions that are had directly with unionized employees can be, you have to be cognizant of the way that you interact because if they're represented by a union, they're represented by an exclusive bargaining representative. Discussion of the terms and conditions of their employment directly with the employee who is a unionized employee circumventing their exclusive bargaining representative could lead or it could expose the town to what's called direct dealing or bad faith bargaining. That's why, that's one legal reason why it's very important that when you're dealing with the town, if you're communicating with town personnel through the town manager. We don't want, I'm giving you this advice to protect you as councillors and to protect the town in terms of how it handles its, its employees. Are there any questions on?
Section cited? Where is that in the charter?
So, so the directive on, so under Section 5.7, relative to administrative services, is where it speaks to, that neither the council nor any of its members shall direct or request the appointment. The town council deals officially with staff through the town manager. That's where you should find that. The, the discussion about collective bargaining and what the potential negative impacts of that, that's just from my own, that's just my opinion. That isn't set forth in the charter. But the, that language as to not dealing directly and whatnot comes from that provision of the charter.
If we're somewhere and there are town employees, we just take up a conversation, that's okay?
That's, that's okay. Right. General conversation is, is, is okay. And this is probably one of those situations where it comes up, you know, if you're just having a conversation, you say, you know, how's it going? They happen to say, oh, well, you know, we've got this great issue over in the public, I'm going to use the Public Works Department, got this great issue over in the Public Works Department. Have you heard? Blah, blah, blah. Best to listen, and if you have questions about the situation, direct them to the town, direct them to the town manager so that the town manager can, can provide the information back to you or look into something rather than gather more information and engage in, in a, you know, oh, that, that sounds terrible. Oh, that sounds terrible. Let me see what I can do to fix it. You need more money? We'll give you, we'll increase your wages. You know, sometimes the casual conversation can turn where they said, oh, I talked to Councilor Jones and he promised me a raise next year. Well, that could come back to bite us from, from the, from the exclusive bargain, from the union's perspective. One would ask the question, it gets asked of me often, well, if we're, if we're giving something more beneficial to an employee or we're, you know, we're, we're talking to them in a favorable light, what's the problem with that? It still amounts to an interference claim and a direct dealing claim because, and because if the town is, is making promises that are more beneficial, what's the point of needing a union? You're basically undermining the union. And they could make a claim of, of direct dealing against us.
Keep it to the weather, in other words.
Keep it to the weather. Sometimes it's hard to keep it to the weather, though, right? I mean, I mean, people come to you, they approach you, they know that you, they know that you have the power to either influence something or they, they want you to know that something's not right. The best course of action in something like that, my advice would be to listen and, and speak to, to the town manager in terms of how do we get a resolution to this or are you aware of this or how can we work on this for that employee? Best to listen, funnel through the town manager. Okay? Any questions on, on the appointment powers of employees and, or anything like that? No? All right. Smart group. So one of the other topics is, as the town attorney, I'm the legal advisor to you as the, of the, you as the council. I'm a legal advisor to the town RTM, to the town manager, to the town clerk, all the department heads, all of the agencies, boards, and commissions, including the Board of Ed if they ever needed to use the town attorney. They typically have their own attorney, but. And I may render legal advice and opinions concerning any legal question to, to you as, as the council. You're all the town, okay? And, and so if you have a request for a legal opinion on a particular issue or topic, the most organized approach to that is to direct your inquiry through the town manager, who I believe is gaining a very robust historical perspective on items that we've already rendered opinions on, may have, be able to, you know, let you know, oh, we've already got, we already have an opinion on that, not so that we're not duplicating expenditures in terms of for legal services. And under Section 8.2.2 of the charter, it actually addresses the, the duties of the town attorney. I mention this briefly because the communications between me and any attorney in my office for the purposes of legal advice or opinion are privileged and there's unique value in that privilege. There may be times when I might come to meet with you or one of my colleagues might come to meet with you, whether it's in a public forum, whether it's an executive session, particularly an executive session, to communicate with you for, for the purposes of providing legal advice. The matter that we're discussing, it might be controversial, it might be sensitive, there may be litigation strategy or advice on how to proceed in a particular negotiation or a transaction, whether it's a contractual transaction or a real estate transaction. And I urge you to protect the confidentiality of the discussions because disclosure of confidential opinion of the attorney can have an enormous negative consequence on a transaction, on the litigation strategy, on the collective bargaining agreement that we might be under, you know, engaged in, or on a negotiation of any, of any other type. It could call the, cause the deal to fall through. It could cause us to be at a disadvantage from a litigation standpoint. The attorney-client privilege is the town's privilege to waive. You are the town. Typically, if either, if an opinion is going to be disclosed or rendered public, it's certainly something that should take place in conjunction with a conversation with the town attorney, town manager and, and really have a firm buy-in that disclosing the attorney, the discussion, the privilege, waiving the privilege is, is the right, the right move. So I urge you, you know, furthermore, the disclosure, and this has happened, the disclosure of confidential attorney-client privilege communication can transform our relationship that we enjoy of the attorney-client relationship into one where the attorney, me or one of my colleagues may, because it may make us a fact witness. It may conflict us out of representing the town in a particular situation. It may cause us to have to testify even adversely sometimes against the town if that, that confidentiality is breached or, or waived, whether intentionally or unintentionally. And so I just want to, you know, impress upon you that the confidential relationship that, that exists between the town and the town attorney, I urge you to protect that. Any questions? I know, I believe somebody's going to be here also to talk in the future on FOIA and that part, so I don't want to delve into FOIA issues, especially when it's getting late, but. But I understand you'll have separate FOIA training particular to that, but there, you may hear these same kinds of concepts about executive session and whatnot again.
Just mention that on January 9th, we do have the FOIA Commission staff coming.
It's always, it's always great to brush up on your, on your FOIA training. Any other questions about that attorney-client privilege or anything I've seen? Okay. So, the final thing that I wanted to touch on is a, is a, an amendment to an existing law in Connecticut. Connecticut has had, for many, many years, an anti-discrimination, it's basically, it's called discriminatory employment practices are prohibited. That's the name of the statutes. Section 46A-60 Connecticut general statutes. That law has been in effect for, for decades. And it applies to, it applies to the town and recently, in 2022, effective October 1 of 2022, the definition of employee in that statute was changed. And I will read, so it used to exist that the definition of employee meant any person employed by an employer, but not including an individual employed by their parents, spouse, or children. Seems to be an, an example of what we think of when we think of an employee, somebody who's, who's employed for, for pay, basically, by an employer. In 2022, the definition of employee for the Connecticut anti-discrimination statute added that the definition of employee includes any elected or appointed official of a municipality, board, commission, council, or other governmental body. So, it effectively, for, for the last year, the anti-discrimination statute was effectively extended to those folks like yourselves who are volunteers in a, on a municipal board, commission, governmental body, council, et cetera. The reason that is important is in making decisions as the town council, you're making decisions that are, that are, that on behalf of the town. In your role as town councilors, you are also responsible for the appointment of individuals to other ABCs, agency boards and commissions. And everyone in those roles are now protected by this statute. It gives a cause of, a potential cause of action to anybody who feels that they are treated in a discriminatory fashion in their role as a municipal board commission member. It's important for you guys to understand that when you're making decisions, especially those appointment decisions, because that's generally the role that I think that you would be exercising that, or any appointment decisions in, related to town employment, that you're making those decisions for legitimate, non-discriminatory business reasons. And what I mean by legitimate, non-discriminatory business reasons is that no factor in your decision is someone's protected class. The classes that are protected in, under Connecticut law are, are, there's, there's dozens, probably two dozen of them now at this point. But we're talking about based on somebody's gender, race, sexual orientation, religion, creed, disability status.
Age.
Age. Age, hair, hair type, criminal. There's some criminals, it doesn't necessarily apply in this situation, but there's, there's protected hairstyles, veteran status. Whether somebody's a victim of direct, and you have knowledge of somebody's a victim of domestic violence, that could also be a protected class. Somebody's medical history, their genetic composition. Their, there's, the, the way that Connecticut describes or, or articulates their protected classes is it very much breaks down, under federal law, there's like six or seven protected classes, like we just said. Under Connecticut law, it breaks it down. It's learning disability, mental disability, physical disability. Then there's, each, each category or class has a, is a, there's, can be different nuances in there. I wanted to, I want to make sure that, that, and I'm bringing this up to all of the different, you know, in other towns that I, that I work. It's important because it's, it's a statute that I'm not sure a lot of municipal, volunteer municipal boards, commissions, councilors, governmental bodies, members are aware of. But it's important because you want to make sure that your decisions are based in legitimate, non-discriminatory business reasons. If you're keep, if you keep notes on why you may make a decision, that's, you might want to keep extra, extra careful notes on, on what those reasons are. You want to be careful as to how you're portraying or, or how you're explaining your decisions. I just, I don't, would, I don't want our, anybody on this, this board, this council, or any of the boards, commissions, or agencies that you, authorities that you appoint people to, to find themselves, you know, with their name in a complaint that they've acted in a discriminatory manner. Any questions? Yes?
So, you're on a board or something that, that appoints, some, you, we appoint somebody to a board, and we think we have a legitimate reason why we want them or we don't want them. They perceive it differently. What, what happens then? Do they sue the town? Do they sue you? What's the follow-up from how they perceive? You may think you're doing it correctly, but they perceive it differently.
Right.
What happens?
So, so the, the process that's in place is the same process that in any other employee, whether it's, you know, I'm going to pick on the Public Works Department again. You know, you got a, a paid employee in your Public Works Department who believes that they're not, that they're being discriminated, they're the only female in the Public Works Department. They think that the decisions that are made against them are because they're female. They file, they would go to the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities and file a complaint there, saying that, that maybe they missed out on a promotion or whatever the adverse employment action, or maybe there's a hostile work environment. They would have to, and they believe it's a hostile work environment based on their gender. The process would be that they, well, first, we would always hope that they would bring it to somebody internal. They, they have to let us know as the town. If they have never let the town know that they feel that they're being treated this way, then the town has a, has a pretty solid defense that we can't fix something we don't know is happening. Right? So, they have to, they, they have to bring it. If you haven't put the town on notice, you're almost guaranteed that the CHRO is going to dismiss your complaint, that, that the town has no liability for that. Okay? But the general process is they would file a complaint with the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, and the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities would then serve the town with a, with an administrative complaint that says, we've received this. It's got enough buzzwords and it's got enough, enough there. And we're going to investigate it. And then you would launch into a CHRO investigation.
So, what this law has done is expanded it past just general responsibilities.
Absolutely.
That town manager, Bert, is responsible. Now, it's, now it's going to cover every single board, committee, commission, everything that we do, which is pretty broad.
Yes.
It's going to, all of those people, how we put them in or don't put them in or whatever we do, accept them or not, they're all able to come and use this law to either fight it or agree with it or something. Is that what you're saying?
That is, that's a bit of what I'm saying. I, I will tell you that the his, the, the general history, the legislative history on, on, behind that addition was related to, primarily related to either gender discrimination or sexual harassment occurring in, on a board, a municipal board or commission. And there was a need, nobody had any, the, the legislature found that people didn't have protection against sexual harassment or gender discrimination. There was no mechanism for that. And so you were affected, effectively municipal boards and were, were able to either, you know, continue to foster a, a very similar, you know, we don't appoint, we, we don't appoint women. We, it's only men. Or the women that are on there are subject to sexual harassment by their, their fellow male board members. That's really where the impetus for this came from. When you, when you put that, though, in a, in a broad law like this, it really, it does, it expands it tenfold.
It seems like they just open it to...
They, they open the floodgates.
So, it could be...
Yeah. They open, I mean, I, I'm going to say, I believe there probably was something that needed to be fixed. I don't know if this was the right fix. It's so new, I, we haven't been, there's no case law on it yet. We haven't seen it applied in practice or in, in litigation, so... Stay tuned. Anybody else have questions? Council Board one?
Yeah. So, in regards to like, if there's something in the charter that we are questioning, like, just like action. I know, like, with the RTM appointment on, of that seat, it was precedent, and then it was said that it wasn't for the Board of Adse. And there's still question to some. I've gotten calls that the RTM seat is in question as well, of how resignation versus, and then I think the follow-up email that I got was that, you know, if someone wants it, they can take it to court. I'm just concerned that, why wouldn't the town want a rule on that? So, how does one move that forward if you want a ruling on something? If you want an opinion, you want a real opinion, someone to look at this and say, we're acting and following no form of voter disenfranchisement. So, how do we then, because I know you said, I know at the state level, they said, as an elected official, we have the right to access the attorney if we need them for any, the state attorney said that that's the right of, of an elected official to, to utilize that. So, I'm just a little confused, but also trying to understand if we have a question about what the interpretations are on things.
Right. So, I, where the state officials, and I'm not sure what the state official was looking at, but in Groton, you have a town charter. Your town charter has a provision on the town attorney. And I think if you look to your charter, you will find the guidance that you need up there. If there are still questions, I would urge you to direct them to the town manager to determine whether there's, there's something that needs, needs an opinion on it or not.
I think it was, the, the last thing was, is, is it closed out, John? Or do, should I just send something forward? What was the final closure on that opinion?
Well, I don't want to be discussing opinions.
No, but, but it was saying you'd take it to court if you wanted to, so.
Yeah.
If you don't want to go to court, I just, so would I send an email again to John? Then it goes to you, or?
Yeah, I would, I would take it offline with John, because we don't want to get into talking about opinions.
It's not, it's not anything, I mean, I'm just asking because as these questions come up, people address us all the time about, is this following the charter? Why didn't you go into executive session? So, charter questions come up. I mean, they're not, those are public things. Everyone should know what the outcome of those are. And I'm just, I'm, I'm just wondering how one executes that when we have questions that affect the charter.
I, I mean, not all, not all quite, just because it is a charter question doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't mean that it is a public, the opinion of the town attorney needs to be a public opinion. It's a, it's a confidential correspondence between the town and whomever. And, and, you know, if you're, if you're, there needs to be consensus as to whether or not to waive attorney-client privilege communications. Do you have any more comments or questions?
I, I think the other thing is, is I think naturally too, it depends, I, I had a question. If you're talking to somebody, obviously, that's a no-brainer, that's like with any job. You can't tell someone, oh, I'll give you a raise. That, that's kind of, for me, common sense. You know, that, that's not something you ever...
You'd be surprised.
You ever want to talk about. But, you know, there are times when you're acting as a taxpayer citizen, you're not wearing the town council hat, and you're having a conversation, like, say, someone from the, the board, you know, the superintendent, because you're discussing a parent issue, like a bus problem, or... So, there are times that you have to separate and you can contact as an independent issue with your own source, from my understanding.
I, I'm not sure I follow, what was the question?
So, just in general, you talk about department heads and things, there are times when it's personal, like, I have a personal tax, a tax question that has nothing to do with anybody here. I'm not calling to appoint or tell anybody at the tax office what to do. I'm inquiring about my own personal question.
Oh, absolutely.
When we, as persons, have to take that hat off and we do have to act and directly contact department heads because the septic thing is backing up or the, the hole in your neighborhood's backing up, and you need to call the Public Works Office or something like that.
Absolutely.
I'm not going to wait and go through the town. I mean, you are an independent person outside of that.
Correct. You, you don't check your residency at the door just because you're a counselor. You, you do have the ability to contact and conduct your own town business, your personal town business. Is it my turn? Yes. Okay. I have, Council Board one, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, there. Thank you for coming out. So, two questions. The first would be if we, if a board is doing discrimination, what steps? Is there a step that the council has to do something? Or someone else has to do something?
No, there, there isn't a step that the council has to do, that, that the council has to do anything. If, if somebody, if, if somebody believes that there is discriminatory action being taken place, you would identify that for the town manager, and the town manager can determine how to look into that problem.
No, I would think if there was some credibility, the council may want to remove somebody.
Correct. Correct.
And that was where it was going with that question. And to the, to Council Board one's question to you about calling as a personal matter, you're only calling the department, not the department head to handle your situation. So, you're not going to ask for a call and ask for the department head, just to get a little clarification.
Right. If you're, if you're looking for, for, I don't know, the taxes due on your, on your property, you're not going to call the department head. You're going to call the tax office and speak to the person who answers the phone and ask your question.
But it could be, I've had a department head pick out.
Sometimes they have to. That would be the luck of the draw, I think.
And I think it's important, don't identify yourself as a town councilor if you're doing private business.
Yeah.
Because it puts undue pressure.
It, it does put a new pressure, and then, and then it, the, the perception is that you're using your position as a town counselor to get, to obtain an action different than what a, a regular taxpayer would seek or be able to obtain. It, it happens from time to time, but I can tell you that, you know, no matter what your position is in the town, if you're, if you're a volunteer, if you're a volunteer firefighter in a town and you call up and you say, I'm a volunteer in this town and I demand X, you know, you're using your town position to, to try to obtain something greater than what you would normally receive.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have some questions. So, I've had one for a while now about the relationship between town council So I've had one for a while now about the relationship between town council and regulatory bodies, and such as, let's say, planning and zoning. The town council appoints them. They are regulatory, we are legislative, and what kind of work can we do together, if any? And our influence upon them.
You ask an excellent question. I would like to get back to you on that.
Thank you, because I have had many people say, oh, you should work with planning and zoning, and you should get together, and you should do all these great things together. But I thought there was, it's dividing roles, and there's regulatory and we're legislative, and we can't unduly influence them, is what I've been told. But there are ways that I hear that we could work together on certain issues, that maybe, but I'm curious.
I will get back to you on that.
Thank you. And what about town counselors? I mean, you discussed the discriminatory rules that have changed in 2022. But what about town counselors and their behavior towards staff? I was under the impression that staff, if they come before us and they're treated a certain way, like maybe due to their performance or their work, their job performance, that they have the right to go into executive session for those instead of being done publicly.
So there are, there are certain executive sessions that, under the Freedom of Information Act, if you're, there are certain, there are certain events related to personnel that warrant or permit an executive session, and then there are certain, certain discussions that don't warrant executive session. And then the employee has the right to demand that the conversation be held in a public forum and not in executive session. And so it really depends on who the employee is, what the nature of the issue is, and whether or not it would warrant an executive session or be a proper executive session. That's probably a very good question you might want to pose to the Freedom of Information representative who comes as to what executive sessions would be appropriate for a specific personnel issue. But there are, they vary, and not all, not all discussions about personnel performance are a proper executive session.
Just to follow up, let's say it's a union position, and council starts, say, you're terrible at your job, this and that, could that trigger some union representation requirements?
Certainly. So that's, that absolutely is far different than an executive session issue. That's a just cause issue under a collective bargaining agreement. And whenever you're, whenever you're discussing, whenever you're discussing a unionized work, a unionized employee's performance, or they have the right to have, not only to be present, but also to have their union representative present.
And the non-union falls under.
So if the non-union is here and things are said, you have the right to say, you know what? I'm stopping this.
Yeah, I'll cut it off if I feel the need.
Okay. I thank you for giving us the update. I also, when it comes to some of the issues regarding that change in 2022, I'll talk to some state representatives regarding that and how some issues may have been changed. I would like to know, though, if, as with Counselor Jones had said, there are people that are selected for a committee, and somebody is not chosen, and because we are political parties, and there's probably some, some issues that could come into play there due to political parties, I just don't know how that's, that should be handled. So.
Politics is not a protected class. So you, if, but if the decision is based along party lines, and that could be a legitimate business reason that's articulated as to the reason why somebody is appointed over somebody else.
Okay. I just think it could become very political, the whole issue, so.
It can be, and you're identifying one of the problems that I, we have yet to see. But I really do feel that as people become aware that this law has changed, we may see a lot more.
And then one more question, then I'll leave it alone. If there is, I have heard from, at other board meetings, like a town council will go there and they'll say, I'm a citizen first and then a town counselor. And I'm just curious, like, what is your role as a town counselor within our community? I mean, how does, how are you looked upon and with your roles and responsibilities? Let me, I'm just sort of struggling with.
So certainly as a town counselor, you are a resident and a citizen of the town of Groton. You have the ability to participate in other, you know, appear before and exercise your, you know, your fundamental rights as a taxpayer and a citizen in the town. What you can't do, though, is exert and use your position as a town counselor to exert or attempt to exert influence to sway another board or commission to make, to make a decision. But you don't, you have the ability to talk and/or to present or speak as a taxpayer on, you know, matters of concern that are important to you as a taxpayer.
Right. Depending on the roles of that committee, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Point of clarification?
Council Parker, your point?
The question is, only if there's an option to speak at that.
Correct.
On the agenda.
Correct. You're absolutely correct. That's, that, you can't just show up and speak if there's not, if it's not during a public, public commentary. Thank you.
So for ex officio members, and we have the right to speak during the whole meeting. I mean, that, this is an issue actually that popped up recently. And we have the right to speak during the whole meeting, but not during citizens' comments, but speak during the whole meeting at, say, the RTM, because we are ex officio members. I mean, we're going there, it's basically they're giving us the role as the counselor to speak throughout the whole meeting. So there was an issue with that.
So but are you speaking in that, in that role? Are you speaking as the, you're speaking as the counselor if you're in the ex.
But there will say that town counselors can only speak during the meeting and not during citizens' comments.
Because you're there as, as an ex officio member, you're not there as a taxpayer. Okay. Council Board one?
Thank you. You know, just, it is hard, though, because at the end of the day, like, I see somebody and someone says, Isaac's mom, and it's like, oh, yeah, hi, like, you, people know your name. So when you show up, unfortunately, they still hear you when you talk and you say, Porsche Oral on 24 Jefferson Drive, I'm here to speak as a citizen. They still see Councilor Board one. You can't take, I mean, you can't remove your mask. So it is hard. So even though you think you're not, it's just, it's hard not to. You just show up at, I mean, but I can't, you can't change that. But as Council Franco spoke with the RTM, they made a rule, which I think, my opinion is it's more restrictive. They said, and I, and I'll send this opinion, because along with the other things I have that I have a question, that you cannot speak under public comment. So I can't even go there as a taxpayer and say, Porsche Oral on 24, that's disenfranchising my political right. That was imposed by someone on the council there that thought I came and spoke at every public comment. I love to speak under public comment as a citizen, because there are things on the city side of town that I want to speak to my District Two and District Three representatives, and I don't want to speak as an ex officio member randomly when the item comes up. I rather speak and use my time. So currently, as the rules are of the RTM, is that you cannot show up there as Porsche Oral on 24 Jefferson Drive, not a counselor, and speak because I am a counselor. That's illegal. That's voter disenfranchis, I mean, I'm being not allowed to speak to my District Two and District Three representatives. So that is a concern. And there are, have been committee meetings here from the council where, according to the charter and according to our rules, it says that the chair can make the final ruling, but it says as ex officio members, as a council, we should be able to go to every committee meeting and be recognized and be able to, we can't vote, we can't sway, but we are as a counselor, as an ex officio member to a committee, we should be afforded the right to engage in that as a counselor. That's the way it was read, that's what I was told. So I can send that to you as well. But definitely the RTM is definitely a big concern, because they didn't even say, no, you can't wear that hat. They said, no. If you're a town counselor, so, and I said, I brought this up to the town manager, and I said, but you're just identifying me when I walk in the room as a town counselor. You haven't even given me a chance to identify, am I a citizen or am I a counselor? You can't take that away from me. That's against the law. Voter disenfranchisement, I'm not getting afforded the fair, equal opportunity under statutes. I don't have the numbers in front of me. Under public fair comment, I should have the right to speak there. So that, I think we're not applying. That is, that is a concern. And, yeah, that's definitely. And then on our boards and our committees, we as a counselor, if we show up and we want to engage, like I served on the proper use committee with Counselor McBride, we allow anybody to come and speak, like, the more open, the better, in my opinion. You raise your hand and you're a counselor and you want to speak, you should be able to speak. You can limit the terms like we do up here, but to say that we can't have any input as an ex officio member to a committee that we are a part of, like, we are directly a part of as a counselor, Board of Ed, they are ex officio to all their committee meetings, and they can go and take notes and raise their hand and ask a clarifying question or be a part of the discussion, especially when the referral is from a counselor to a rules committee. You should want that council to be allowed to speak to their referral. Or what are we doing? It's a blank. So if I'm required to send a referral to a rule committee, you, you know, and I looked at all the other, the charter, and I looked and looked at their towns under the voter thing, you should be able to allow that person just to say why this rule was referred and speak to your referral. So there are some gray areas there, but I definitely think the RTM one is definitely one that should be looked at immediately, actually. And if you would like, I'll send it forward.
Council Parker?
So it's, that's why I asked you the question about it has to say public comment on the agendas, first off. Secondly, in talking to F O I Commission, he stated if it doesn't say open comment or open discussion, public comment, they cannot come and speak. Yes, they can be acknowledged that they're at the meeting, but no public speaking unless it's on the agenda. We don't have public speaking tonight. It's a committee. Two, a referral sent in, you read the referrals, you have all the information. We have had meetings where there was unintentional quorum issues when you have a committee meeting. So if you have all council show up at a committee meeting, a subcommittee of three, and you get two more people, that's a quorum. So that, that could be an issue in discussion purposes. So I've asked F O I Commission, Mr. Tom Hennig, to clarify that, and that was the answer I got, is that we don't have to let them speak to avoid any issues because it's not properly acknowledged meeting.
Oh, you're talking about, it could constitute an illegal meeting as, not just a quorum, but it could constitute a.
Especially with discussions.
An illegal meeting.
Especially with discussions and having the meeting without the three members, there's only three members. So any more than that, and they want to have a discussion and continue, if everybody gets in on the discussion, it's an illegal meeting. So in order to avoid that, the rules committee does not have public comment or public speaking, just to make sure that we are not.
I understand what you're saying.
And I think some of the confusion is, councilors are ex officio, all of them are ex officio to the RTM, they're not ex officio to the ABCs, though. That's the difference, they're not, so it's not, they're not guaranteed a right to vote or to speak.
I can, we can move back on this one. I'd appreciate that. Anybody else have questions, comments?
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
All right, well, thank you for coming. Thank you. I'll be back again. All right, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes nine to zero to zero, and it is 10:11:00 P. M. I've been eyeballing them ever since I've been sitting up here. And return. Thank you.